On the agenda, please go to MUSD.org, complete the comments contact form, click submit. For the items not on the agenda, your comments will be read into the record under the public portion on the agenda. For items on the agenda, your comments will be read at the time of that item. The district asks for the contact information from those who wishing to speak so that staff can follow up on the issues brought to our attention. Thank you for your participation in this civic engagement. We are at our study session.
Thank you, President Hunt. I am going to be sharing the agenda, not the agenda, but the presentation right now so that we can begin.
Norma, let me interrupt you for one second. Scott, are there any public comments? I forget all the time.
We don't have any public comments as of yet for the study session. Thank you.
All right. All yours, Norma.
And everyone see the presentation?
Yep.
Hey, good afternoon, members of the board and community. I'd like to introduce the team joining me this afternoon is Directors Barnes, Raquel Kusunoki, Mary-Ju Dopinghouse, and Sandy Hugh, as well as coordinators Farwinder, Yohal, and Stacy Liller, Program Manager Sandra Quintana, and Supervisor Rebecca Call. I wanted to share that this team has played a critical role as lead writers of the draft with guidance from the Santa Clara County Office of Education and also following the state adopted template as well as their process. We are all very excited to be here. Given this our first virtual board presentation study session, we have talked about and established the following protocols. Each presenter will have about five minutes to share the content and will pause for the board to ask questions about the content that has been presented. Then that presenter will hand it over to the next presenter. We also have allocated some time at the end of the presentation so that we can't address any additional questions that you might have. The board will conduct a public hearing during our open session later tonight as California Education Code 434-509 requires our school district to hold a public hearing to solicit recommendations and comments of members of the public regarding the descriptions and the expenditures proposed in the learning continuity and attendance plan that we are presenting to you tonight. The meeting for the adoption of the plan shall be held after, but not on the same day of the public hearing and no later than September 30th at a regularly scheduled board meeting. The MUSD plan will be presented to the board for adoption at our September 22nd board meeting. Now, before I hand it over to the team, it is important that we share with the board a shared understanding of the background and the purpose of this plan. As you recall, on April 2020, Governor Newsom established the Executive Order 5620. This order triggered a revision of the local control and accountability plan and its budget for the 2020-21 school year. We were required to bring to the board COVID-19 report and the board adapted said report at the June 23rd meeting. Subsequently, state legislation passed Assembly Bill 77, known as AB 77, and later on the trailer Senate Bill 98, known as SB 98, which replaced the LCAP as we know it with the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan for this academic year. The template was approved by the state Board of Education the first week of August and the team began the work. However, as we know, the SB established specific requirements for our schools to describe in the plan how the learning continuity will be addressed during the COVID-19 crisis for the 2020-21 school year. Also, you may recall that from June through August, the MUSD COVID-19 Task Force and subcommittee members participated in the development of the plan and thinking about reopening our schools during this pandemic. They engaged in several sub-meetings, they responded to online surveys, and they presented their recommendations to different stakeholders, town halls, as well as to the board on August 3rd meeting. The recommendations are being memorialized here in this plan that we're bringing to you today and for adoption at the 22nd meeting. MUSD's Learning and Continuing Attendance Plan indeed has been a plan that has been written by many of the people that have been involved in it. And so, we will review those recommendations captured within the following main requirement components of the plan. The in-person instruction and distance learning is critical as well as the student learning loss, the mental health and social emotional well-being, and student and parent engagement as well as nutrition. And this will be the components that will, the team will be talking to you about what's in the plan. And now I'd like to hand it over the presentation to Dr. Barnes, who will highlight the components of the in-person and distance learning for you. Greg.
Wonderful. Thanks, Norma. Good evening, everyone. My name is Greg Barnes and I have the privilege of being the Director of Learning and Development with the Milpitas Unified School District. And as Norma so succinctly put, the LCP allows us the opportunity to synthesize all of the work that we've been holding over the last few months into one comprehensive plan that the county has been collaborative partners on us with. So what I'd like to do for you this evening is really frame what our instructional model looks like, both in-person and our current distance model. So one of the things the LCP asks us to do is to really clearly state what our in-person instruction will eventually look like. You have been, public and the board, beneficiaries of many different iterations of what our phased schedules look like. I'm going to go over those briefly in a moment. But what I'd like to do is really start historically with where we've been and where we will hopefully soon be with in-person offerings. As many of you know, the decision was made prior to the start of school that Milpitas would spend the first six weeks in distance learning for a variety of reasons. And after that point, we would need to be off the county watch list for at least 14 days. Some news on that today in particular, but that's a conversation for another time. Initially, we were allowed to ask for waivers for small cohorts of students with unique learning needs to come on campus to receive some individualized or small group instruction. And again, knowing that this is a very organic time in education, we've seen some movement on that in the last week or so where waivers are not necessarily needed. And we can start to plan what some of those small group students with unique learning needs could potentially look like on our campuses. Again, as you're familiar, we have our elementary in-person phased offerings where our students will basically be on an A-B schedule from 8:30 to noon, followed by a lunch with some independent or self-directed learning time in the afternoon. That'll happen two days a week and then, of course, the A-B schedule would flip. Something very similar with our middle school schedule. Our students would see all six periods for half the amount of time in a normal week, again allowing for that small in-person instruction daily as the schedule currently constitutes. That would be from 2:30 to 3:30 in the afternoon, again focusing on our students with unique learning needs. So what does it look like with us, or for us rather, with respect to our distance learning program? So as the slide advances, I'll go ahead and start talking about the enormous amount of work that went into a lot of the different subcommittees' recommendations for how students would receive crafted instruction online. In other words, what does our online curriculum look like? So a lot of the suggestions really worked and valued what was happening in our PLC groups at our schools, elementary with our PLC groups by grade level, through our department structures within our secondary school level. And it really allowed us to continue historical best practices. So some of that work included the calibration of identifying power standards that would be delivered online, what grading would look like across cohorts and across grade levels, and of course, different levels of assessments, whether it be formative, summative, and the frequency of said assessments. Also, we have clear, consistent communication being expected from our teachers, not only to our students, but of course, our parents at home who are doing so much behind the scenes as we continue to partner in education. As many of you know, the first two weeks were set aside for really connecting with our kids and our families. Clarity of practices aside, the social emotional well-being of our students was paramount as we began the school year. And we had a number of successful stories over the last couple of weeks of our students being able to establish that really important connection before academic construction began. Finally, SB 98 is critical in making sure that we are documenting our full and sustainable curriculum online. And not to get into the weeds too much of what that is, but basically, it is making sure we're documenting how our instruction is delivered, full day, partial day, synchronous, asynchronous. Adhering to the number of instructional minutes is really important for us to be documenting. And then weekly, how are our students reacting to whatever it is that we are offering online? And lastly, we have a re-engagement plan which is critical for any of our students who are not engaging or participating as much as we would love them to. And I'm happy to get into questions about what that looks like, but it is tiered out in an MTSS model following everything I've just explained, representing Tier 1 and Tier 2, making sure that that only the classroom teacher, but the site is involved and making sure we're doing outreach for all of our different students and their unique needs. And finally, Tier 3 would be working with very specific individuals here at the district office as we continue those outreach. And from there, I will pause and see if there are any questions.
I have a question, Greg. Going back to the previous slide. Could you explain 16, six weeks versus 14 days?
Sure. So I apologize if I was unclear earlier, but we knew before the school year began that Milpitas was going to be committing to six weeks of online instruction and that the only time we would be able to come back to in-person instructional offerings would be after that six weeks. And if we were 14 days off of, at the time, what was the county watch list, now it is moving from purple into the red.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Greg, I understand that on the the press release that was out today for that meeting, we're in the red, but in order to go back in-person learning, we have to be clear for 14 days on that red and move down to Tier 3. Is that true?
I'm not familiar of, I had heard the grapevine, but I haven't had a chance to verify it myself. If we are moving into the red, I believe that does allow us to come back in-person with certain parameters. I believe in order to get to the red, we have to have already been off the watch list for 14 days, but I could be mistaken.
Thanks. I can provide a little clarity. So when the state revised its watch list and updated its parameters, it created the color coding system and it's called the Document for Economic Development for the state. And we were in the purple and we read. Before the state readjusted where we would be placed, they needed to look at our number of tests as well as the number of people who are positive. And today, the Public Health Department for Santa Clara County said that we are now in the red as the state has informed her because of a combination of the high testing rate that we have, which gives us a credit as well as the number of cases that we experience each day. And so, the one thing that does remain is that we have to not go back into the purple for 14 days before we can move to the next step.
Correct.
Thank you.
Greg, could you talk a little bit more about the Tier 3?
Sure, absolutely. So Tier 3 would involve the school site having come to a point where they feel like they've exhausted all of their outreach opportunities and that they would be looking specifically to individuals at the district office who might specialize, for example, in some of the different pupils or students with unique learning needs. So anything that might be related to students with disabilities, they could reach out to our fabulous new Director of Special Education. If it were a student that was experiencing homelessness or in a foster youth situation, they would refer to our SLS coordinator at the high school. So it's one more layer of support and outreach opportunities with resources that maybe the district has that school sites may not have, just in an effort to try to re-engage our students and to hopefully have them participate at a level that's going to make them successful.
Are there, are there any other components? For example, you mentioned our special, you know, special education students. You mentioned foster youth or homeless. What about those that we would consider as essential worker or have home-related issues that minimizes their ability to effectively engage in education? Would they fall under Tier 3 as well?
Yeah, I mean, we're trying, hopefully not. Hopefully, we're catching that in Tier 1 and Tier 2. But specifically in the re-engagement plan, it's such a good question. I'm so thankful you asked it, is we are making sure that we're filtering out all of our families that not only might meet historical thresholds for being students with unique learning needs, but to make sure that they aren't falling to any of the known barriers that we see in distance learning. So that could be connectivity issues. It could be not enough hotspots. It could be, you know, family-related matters. It could be social emotionally. So those students, we are wanting to make sure that we establish outreach, support services to them from day 1, Tier 1. And one of the things we're doing to ensure that, which we'll get into a little bit later this evening, is to make sure that we have identified students who are already in some of those categories that I mentioned, to make sure that we are proactive in reaching out to those families to support them.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Well, I would love to entertain more questions on these two slides at the end of the slideshow. From here, I'm going to hand it over to Raquel Kusunoki.
Thank you, everyone. Before I begin, I'd like to first define for you and for me so we have a common understanding of the term student learning loss. And what student learning loss is defined as is a loss, a specific or a general loss of knowledge or skill or any reversal in progression due to some extended gaps or discontinuities in the formal education. And in short, what it really means is if you don't use it, you lose it. And it is a normal brain function in all of us. However, I also know, we all know this, that the degree of student learning loss is not going to be the same for all students. The number one group that are disproportionately impacted by COVID is our students who are from low-income family households. So historically, students from low-income households who are already having the hardest time in school and have a lower achievement than their peers tend to have a harder time engaging in remote learning. Because they struggle with distance learning, they're the ones who may fall further behind. So what I'm going to talk about today are three key strategies that our district needs to really implement and embed in our practices to combat the learning loss for students in the most vulnerable group. So looking at the slide, one of the strategies that we need to take into consideration is measuring our students' progress, consistently measuring. There are three types of assessments that we have in our district from the state and as well as the local. We know that CASP is coming up. The state is, you know, telling us to be prepared to administer that sometimes in the spring. That's called a summative test and that's just a year accumulation of what the student had learned over the year. We also have the assessment called diagnostic or benchmark. And what that does is records what a student knows and is able to do on a 6 to 8-week cycle. And the purpose of that is to evaluate the student's knowledge and skills specifically against that grade level standard. More importantly, the diagnostic data is used to measure a student's growth over time. And what we will be using this year is on that slide is I Ready, we have IXL this year, Math. DRA serves two purposes, as formative and some formative and also, I mean, as a diagnostic and formative. The most important piece of, for this year specifically, when we're assessing students, is what we call the formative assessment. And that assessment is learning, is measuring what students know as they are learning, not after the fact, but as they are learning, we're getting information about what the child can do and what they know. And it's going to be more critical now than ever, again, to be able to embed this in our instructional practices that directly align to teachers' instructions so we have specific information on where the student is with regard to their learning. And that is on a daily basis. Greg, if you can go to the next slide. The other strategy, they, student pupil or pupils' learning loss, it has a really negative connotation to it. And I'm sure, you know, we all understand the reasoning behind that, but the reality is we want to look at what can we do to accelerate the learning as opposed to looking at it from a deficit model. We want to look at it from another model of, okay, so we have this information, what are we going to do to move on forward? So in the research that I have been doing over the past several weeks from grade study at school, they have taken the Common Core standards and they have prioritized instructional content for K through 12. So in English Language Arts, they have selected 14 standards that are heavily heavily loaded in the college career readiness. So what they're saying is these 14 standards that cross over in the speaking, reading, writing, listening, and language is what you see a lot in in students who are ready for school, for college, and students who are ready for the career. So by taking all of the standards and bringing it down, consolidating it to 14, it only can allow us to go deeper in the instruction for a student. Meaning, students who are already struggling will have the opportunity to be exposed to rigorous to the same level of rigor as everybody else with the support that they're going to need to be able to master their grade level standard. Part of this instructional prioritizing or instructional content is going to require an ongoing professional development that is designed intentionally for the purpose of streamlining the content, the standards in ELA and Math, and also providing teachers the opportunity to create those formative assessments that directly tie to the instruction so that they're measuring specific things. Additionally, for the professional development that we can design for our teachers, it's giving them the support that they need to be able to create those scaffolds for our students with unique needs. Because our goal is to ensure that the students who've struggled historically are getting the support they need now because we know that they have barriers. We are going to be intentional in what we're teaching. We're going to be intentional in what we are measuring. And we're going to use this opportunity to highlight their assets. And the only way we can do that is to provide them the additional supports, whatever that might mean. So in order for us to take the recommendations from the great city schools and other publishers and authors who've come together to put these guidelines for us, is to set aside the professional development that we need so that we can be intentional in providing our teachers, our administrators, our staff with the tools that they need so they can also execute and make that impact and address the learning loss for our students with the greatest need. And I'm going to stop and wait for any questions you might have.
Are you stopping before you discuss the targeted supports or did you discuss the targeted supports already?
The targeted, no, I, so the targeted support is what, what I'm saying is I give the teachers time to be able to look at who their students are, identify their needs, and then create the next step plans for them, whether scaffold, scaffold tools to access learning in ELA Math or whether it supports some social emotional learning need. So we, the teachers need time to look at their kids, find out what they need so that we can better provide those supports effectively.
So that where, is that where the Wednesdays come in?
Yes, but I want to, the Wednesdays do come in for that, but I do want to talk with the administrators and their administrators first to figure out how we can build that in so that it's consistent, ongoing, consistent, come back to measure, next step. You know, first is understand what those standards are, the 14 ELA standard, what depth of knowledge is, because we want to be able to give students, expose students to the cognitive, the demanding task and what we can do to support them. So giving them time to look at the standards, create lessons, create those formative assessments, and then look at the student to figure out who needs what so we can have those supports in play.
So you just said 14 ELA standards. Are there 14 ELA standards and 14 math standards? Or did you, or was that, or did you mean 14 standards for Common Core? It included math and English Language Arts.
So the math standards are, it's not more of a standard, but it's more of a deep grade level learning, meaning they want students to be able to evaluate problems. They want students to be able to justify their answers. So it's not specifically standard-based, they're more content, but with the rigorous task of, or higher-level questions of creating, developing, synthesizing, evaluating, arguing. So it's two different components that we're looking at. One is specifically the standard, the other one is more of content in math.
So just to kind of reiterate what you said, because you talked about the focus was going to be on 14 standards. Is that accurate?
It's accurate in English Language Arts.
Right. So now you're, now you're clarifying that that 14 standards were focused, were specific to English Language Arts. And then now there's another component around the ability to evaluate on the mathematics. around the ability to evaluate on the mathematics side.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. If there are no further questions, I'd like to pass it on now to our EL coordinator, Harwinder Joel.
Harwinder, your mic's on or off?
Thanks, Mike.
Of course.
Good evening, everyone. And I'm going to cover the English learner portion of what really Raquel talked about learning loss for. So you'll see some things, common themes that I'm talking about. But on English learners, we know that English learners have been deeply impacted during the pandemic by not having, by having limited exposure to English language at home. So from a, from our perspective, what we really need to make sure is that designated ELD is happening at each school site. At the secondary level, middle and high school, there is a designated ELD block, which is really focused on English language development. Elementary school, there is no block, but we, each elementary school will have a plan where they will they will ensure that designated ELD is happening on the schedule. From that, if that happens, the students will get that practice in listening, speaking and reading and writing, but mostly on listening and speaking. And then we really need to monitor, measure and monitor EL student academic and language learning. We were not able to have the summative LPAC in the spring for all our students. And then at this time, we also haven't been able to administer the initial LPAC. So we are looking at right now an IPT language assessment that we can use to monitor EL progress during the
What is IPT?
I'm sorry, what was it? Individualized test proficiency test in English.
Yes, if you don't mind, it's important that everybody remembers that, not everyone is immersed in these acronyms.
Yes, thank you, thank you. So we will have that to measure our, if our students are making progress. We will also have monthly district wise collaboration with site EL PFD and other admin, so we can monitor the progress of the students that are making in each grade level at the site and then look at, see prioritize what are the interventions can be provided. Our emerging students, those are the beginning students, because we don't have, we only have handfuls throughout the sites, it's especially for elementary, we are kind of coming together to figure out how we are going to provide extra support to those students. It could be, you know, during those Wednesdays, during after, in the afternoons or a Saturday academy like we did in the spring, but we are going to be creating those interventions for those students from a district level wide. And then also coming up with teachers, teachers have been really great and site admin been really great reaching out for professional development needs for the teachers, so providing ongoing professional development for best practices for ELS through C to C. And then really the community liaison have been a bridge for our families when it comes to really providing language support or any other resources that we can reach out in the community. Are the most difficult part for us is, is that having language ambassadors, people who can reach out to who, other than Vietnamese and Mandarin or Spanish. So because we have so many languages in the district and really finding, creating a bank of ambassadors who a teacher might need in case, you know, student hasn't logged in or there's no one at the site that can translate. That's one work that's really in the next week or two that I really am trying to create that, like a tree of ambassadors that the sites know who they can reach out to.
Harwinder, one question for you, if you don't mind. So when you talk about these community liaisons and language ambassadors, the first place that we've looked is across the district within all of our staff, correct?
Correct, correct.
And then, once we're not unable to locate a community liaison or a language ambassador, we have the ability to go out to the community as far as seeking out parents and those types of things, is that accurate?
That is accurate. We just have to be, sometimes, you know, some information is confidential. So we want to figure out how we can, you know, have those ambassadors and for me, we do have district wide system that we reach out, say for IEP translations, if those people are not available within district. But we want to kind of create a system of, which, if information needs to be confidential. So for example, if we commute some, a school site admin or a teacher, even a community liaison, we need to do a home visit. Right? We don't have anybody on our staff that speaks that language. How are we going to be able to do that? Or, you know, so I think that's kind of looking at broadly at different needs. Also for the, with the language ambassadors, but you are correct, I do reach out to a lot of community members, sometimes if I know that there is a language in need. But again, it's more of the confidential part, if that comes up, we want to be ready.
Right, so that's the exception, is that the norm or the exception, is there more confidential? And the reason why I'm mentioning this is that because tomorrow, I believe we're hosting the partnership, MUSD Partnership of Community Organizations. And there'll be community organizations there that may have these types of resources that could possibly be community liaisons ambassadors, of course, remotely or virtually. And so I just wanted to make sure that I had a good understanding of, because this might be an ask of the community that we need folks that speak different languages, that have the ability to translate, to support the district.
Yes, please, please, if you could provide that, that would be great, because the more support we have, the, I think we will bring the community together more by languages also. So yes, that would be great.
So did you, so did you just volunteer for tomorrow night or?
I just got to say, Harwinder, I'll see you tomorrow at six thirty.
Six thirty, I guess I did, I did, anything that's going to help our families. Thank you for, how I didn't, we know that was happening, I'm so happy, okay. And then the next again is comes to community is our D-LAC, which are monthly D-LAC meetings for English language parents. And then our E-LAC is a site E-LAC meeting, so I want to just make sure that sites are have, it is required by law that we have our E-LAC meetings at site also, not just the D-LAC. So we need to, that's where the English learner families give feedback on programs for English learners. So for example, this continuing plan, last week, we met with our D-LAC member from last year and they give very valuable input into the plan that really helped us to figure out what our next steps are going to be. And then just EL parent workshops. And just the more we communicate, the more we have conversations with our parents, the more we find out what their needs are. And so I just want to keep stressing. The teachers are really communicating with the admin and with the community liaisons and with me, what are the needs are. Now, it's really our next step is the language, right? So the language and the technology and the internet access. But I know we're working towards that, but those are the needs of our EL families, because they're also, you know, are the same needs that Raquel mentioned. So thank you. Any questions if you have? All right, and next will be, is it Mary Jude?
Before we move on to Mary Jude, Harwinder, could you just give us a point in time summary of where you are in providing targeted support to our EL students given the new twenty fifth August guideline, guidance for small group support?
Okay, so right now we are in the process of, you know, all the testing is getting finished and we know also to have identify who are the beginning level students. We have, and then tomorrow is SST, on the tenth is SST meeting, the school site teams where we come together to talk about interventions. In that meeting, we will be, one ask will be for them to identify those students and then come up with the intervention. So we already know from last year which students will need the targeted interventions and I will be communicating with the principals. And we have already started working with some of the sites, with the Ealtosa, the high school and Randall, which supports that they will need. So that's, we're at the beginning levels with some of the schools that have higher needs.
Thank you.
Okay, so good evening, Community Board of Trustees Superintendent Jordan. My name's Mary Jude Darpinghouse, I am the Director of Student Services and Special Education. And so I'm going to cover this slide in coordination with Stacy Lillard, our Coordinator of Student Services and Special Education. So in terms of our journey on this process, as you know, Stacy and I just joined here recently. And when we think about where we've been and where we're going, I think it's important for us to reflect on the distance learning and services that were provided last spring and over the summer as that provided with a bit of information that we're able to think about, learn from and incorporate into the learning continuity plan here. And so as I think about where we are right now, taking the information and what we've learned about, we've gotten some clearer guidance from the state in terms of our state instructional minutes. And I think that no matter whether we were in these times of distance learning or whether we're in in-person learning, it's always important that our instructional minutes for special education services align to general education. And so as we look at the services that we're providing, we are aligning our special day class, class instructional minutes to that which their gen ed peers would be also getting. So if you're at the high school and it's two hundred and forty minutes per day, those are what our special day class teachers are providing as well. So we're trying to align those services as we would during normal in-person learning. Because we don't necessarily have alignment directly for that for our CBI classes, we're aligning those minutes to our high school minutes as well. In terms of looking at the services that we're providing, whether you have SAI, which is stands for specialized academic instruction, or whether we're looking at speech and language services or occupational therapy services or psychologists doing counseling services. Here, we're executing our services in alignment with the IEP. And so what's happened so far is that distance learning plan information was sent out to all of our families that was outlining what those services would look like during this time. And what we've, what you will be seeing is a variety of different ways to meet those needs. So specifically, there are students who have individualized services, students who have small group instruction. Students who had perhaps like push in to a classroom by a specialist, you might see the staff are pushing into those services into a Zoom classroom or a Google Meet classroom where the teacher's instructing and they're a part of that time or doing a mini lesson. Also, you'll see consultation services. In addition, right now, we have wonderful paraeducators who are also supporting our programs. And so some of them are supporting in small groups just as they normally would as well. Again, that's always under the guidance of a certificated staff member, so either the teacher or specialist that is working with that particular provider. Stacy, I think you were going to speak to the professional development component. I will say that as Raquel mentioned earlier, it's an ongoing process and one that started before either Stacy or I came, but continues to be something that we are consistently doing by providing updated information, updated tools, updated resources, updated trainings. And what we've been doing is leveraging since I started here, a memo on Mondays that includes some of that information. So Stacy, do you want to take it further from there?
Sure, okay, so in terms of the professional development that teachers have been receiving around the distance learning process, well, they were given training on how to navigate the Google Classroom, Zoom platforms and other online tools. In terms of the distance learning plans and in an effort to promote student engagement, the teachers are required to complete like a weekly log that just tracks the engagement of level of students. And that can mean anything from attendance, completing assignments, and this is during both synchronous and asynchronous instruction. So that could be with the teacher as well as during related service hours. So if a student is having, if a student has speech and language as part of their IEP, that level of engagement is also tracked. In terms of the distance learning plans that were individualized, as Mary Jude said, all of our parents received an individual template and the staff were trained, the teachers were trained to collaborate with each related service provider. So they worked together to look at all of the student IEPs within a particular classroom and created those distance learning plans based on the individual student services. So if there was a, the student was, is receiving speech and language and OT, which is occupational therapy, they collaborated with the teacher to complete those plans by giving examples of activities that were going to be utilized as a part of those related service hours.
And if I could just add on to that too, I think that one thing that I'm happy to hear is that our special educators are part of this BSC trainings that have been happening. Oftentimes, the special education may not be included in those kinds of trainings. And so they are missing those core things that they need to also know about so that they could support the the general education teachers and the students in the general education classes. So I think it's great that they've been able to be a part of those trainings and whether it's Seesaw or Google Classroom or the various platforms. So I think that, that's been, that's a great, that's a positive for our district in that they are, it's inclusionary and they need to be a part of that, because we're always trying to support our students in the least restrictive environment. Stacy, were you covering accommodations as well? Were you going to talk about that?
So accommodations, you mean like in the, as through the distance learning, like their five oh fours or?
Just in general, or if you want?
In general, so one of the things that we're doing to leverage our resources is by connecting with our related service providers and getting tips on how to improve classroom instruction by working with the paraeducators to sort of guide activities. So if we see like student engagement is declining, we'll reach out to our adaptive PE specialists to give us some pointers on how to improve engagement when students are participating in PE and just sort of leveraging their expertise on how to refine the services and that are happening within the, within the distance learning environment.
Great. And then the other thing I will say is that in terms of the IEPs and five oh fours, we're able to continue to leverage those accommodations. And then in some cases with distance learning, we will need to think about things that are more unique to this kind of a platform. For example, sometimes students need maybe closed captioning where they might not have needed it in person. As terms of where we're headed, I think it's important to note on Friday, the California Department of Health issued updated guidance related to cohorts. And so what's critical to know here is that they provided additional guidance in terms of clarifying what a cohort could be and the parameters for that in terms of the cohort size, which now allows for up to a total of sixteen inclusive of all of the staff. And so that gives a little bit more flexibility, especially for our classes that have perhaps one to one providers. It also gave updated guidance on cohort mixing, which we are looking at. There's some specific guidance that is slightly different for our preschool classes, which we're taking into effect, taking into consideration. And more specifically, it's really looking at providing the opportunity for targeted small group support. And so what we're doing right now in terms of that is looking at partnering with our staff and finding out who we have that's able to return and to do in-person support. We're coordinating that with our HR department and making sure that we know who
and making sure that we, we have, we know who is available. We've also been in contact with MPTA and CSEA as well to keep them apprised of the situation. We're also going to be providing an updated survey to our parents. There was one that was sent out in July, but a lot has changed since then. And so specifically looking at our CBI population and looking ahead towards, you know, being able to begin in-person support and basically just pulling all of these things together so that we can prepare for that to begin to support our students in targeted small group support sessions. Questions?
On the, a couple of things first, just to remind everybody that MPTA is a
Thank you.
Just inclusive PTA and CBI is community-based inter-instruction. And I know we're working to be prepared to bring in special cohorts of specialized students for targeted support. And we're hoping to do that the week of September fourteenth. How is that process looking?
Well, that is the work that we're doing right now. In terms of trying to get to that timeline, we need to gather a bunch of information yet to be able to do so, just to make sure we have all the protocols in place that we're working with MOT to make sure we have, you know, things that we need in place for that to make sure that we have parents and we're able to create the groups. We've already met with Milpitas High School and had some conversations with them. It might be tight to do it, but I know we're working as quickly as possible. So that's next week. I would be, if I'm being honest, I'm guessing it would be later in the week than the beginning of the week, just knowing what we had a short week this week and then we're trying to pull everything together. I think the positive thing Superintendent Jordan is that we do have some, um, some information that we can leverage off of from E S Y this summer, which we're pulling in. And, and I think as we look at this in terms of bringing small group back, I need to work with the committee. Then we're meeting on Friday. But I've also had other conversations. We'd be looking at a phase in kind of process. Potentially, I, I need to work with the whole team, but I do see us starting with potentially the community-based instruction group and then adding other groups as we go along. Again, I, that is me speaking and not the whole entire group yet, but I do think that that's where we could begin. And I think if we start with one group and then we move with that success based on that to the next group, the next group. And I just want to work with the team to make sure that we're phasing in, make sure that we brought parents communicate, communicated with parents in a timely, timely manner. And then also worked with the staff and HR to make sure we have the coverage that we need to ensure that it's successful.
Great. Thank you.
So you're not looking for, so you're not looking for perfection?
No, there is no perfection, I don't think. And there's always, everything has to be individualized and nuanced. But I, I do think that we have a lot of information to work off of. And when we bring everybody's minds together, that will be able to execute it well and successfully. But I would say probably not perfectly. There'll be some glitches that we're going to have to navigate our way through.
And we'll continue to iterate on, which is what M U S D Educate Everywhere is. And we're doing two point O. So constantly learning from those challenges and successes helps to build for the next, next one. And I really appreciate that you're targeting, doing, beginning with our students with the most exceptional needs and figuring out how we can support them. Thank you very much to you and Stacy for that.
No problem. Um, okay, it's my turn to turn it over to Sandra Quintana. She's going to talk to us about mental health.
Before, before you start, Sandra, here's a public question. I believe it is relating to special ed. Scott, would you please read the question?
Sure. This is a public comment from Robert Jones of Park Victoria Drive. And his comment is, how will M U S D assess and ensure student learning for kindergarteners where social skills such as sharing with other students, parent separation, et cetera, are unlikely to be achieved through remote distance learning?
I'm not sure that special education, although the, it's dependent upon that student, that particular student. In terms of looking at social skills and parent separation, I think that we have an opportunity where we can leverage a lot of the programs that we have here and the fact, in fact, coming up next is Sandra, who will be speaking about social emotional learning and wellbeing. And I think that we have a number of programs that we can incorporate into our teaching practices that support that. There's, you know, scenarios that you can play out. There's, there's activities that we can ask our families to work with and our teachers to work with. There's a number of things that we can pull into place that will allow us to prepare our kids for that. And, and to adjust to that through social stories and things of that nature. I think it's a, it's a process that's going to take some time. We're just really in a position right now where this is very new and those social things happened naturally. You know, within the context of recess and things of that nature. And so now what we're doing is figuring out different ways that we can teach those skills through other, you know, Google classrooms and Seesaw and those types of things instead.
I'd like to interject as well. I think one of the things that Robert was referring to is that he was, was volunteering with the, to, for the PTAs to consider, because there has been conversation around these social bubbles. I mean, there are so many things that a school district can do. We do know that families are experiencing their day-to-day activities and their lives as well in terms of how they're spending time. So there is an opportunity there for the PTA to look at strengthening its membership by being able to help coordinate social bubbles at different schools or in different, at the different locations, whereas, and then the school has the opportunity to come alongside of, with them as well.
I appreciate that clarity, Vice President Norwood. I also think that as we're looking at it from a school side or also in terms of just students in general, as we have students who can come back or at the elementary, when we're able to do that, thinking about those social bubbles and those groupings will allow the opportunity for some of those activities as well. Yes.
Norma, since Greg, since Dr. Lopez isn't here and he's been able to work with the C to C population, the, could you talk a little bit about the point that Robert was referring to as far as the kinders?
Sure. And also Parwinder is working very closely with the kinder and T K teachers. And, and, and also reaching out to the parents. So one of the things is basically, as I'm talking to the parents is gathering the parents to identified how they can support one another and in, in a safe manner. But I can't, I need to explore a little bit of more of that. I, and I'm thinking that is basically connecting the, it's through the parent, through parent connections. And the teachers are, some of the parents that I met with are very interested in doing that. And so it's just making those connections.
Will that be a part of the P two P work that you're doing?
It is.
P two P is parent to parent connections.
See, I did it too. You see that right there? I just slipped that acronym right in, didn't even call it. Yep, absolutely. Thank you.
From briefly, from what I've met with some of the parent leaders, what they would like to do is it's a variety of things that they want to do. And one of those things is basically creating the social bubbles.
It looks like we're up next with Sandra and Rebecca for mental health and social emotional wellbeing.
All right. Thank you all. And you actually covered at least one of our points. So thank you. So good evening, everyone. I will be prevent, presenting this first slide on mental health and social emotional wellbeing. Speaking to the subcommittee recommendations from staff support and student support from the summer. And Dr. Cole will be speaking a little bit more about what those services look like in terms of all-around wellness and mental health. So when looking at mental health and social emotional wellbeing, we really want, as Dr. Barnes alluded to earlier, for this to be a primary focus. Yes, the beginning and coming back to school, but extending throughout this entire time during distance learning and beyond. So we want this to really be the time where we embrace social emotional learning. And first and foremost, talk about what is social emotional learning and get on the same page for what that means. That is why we have the circle on the right-hand side with the five social emotional learning competencies, or I will refer to it as S E L from now on. There's self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, and social awareness. Also, when looking at each of these competency areas, you can really see how what Raquel was describing in terms of formative assessments, in terms of creating lesson plans that speak to the student needs, how you can really interweave these types of skills into lesson planning, or as Parwinder was referring to in educating, you know, students who with English as a second language or who are learning English, you can, when we want them to be problem-solving and critically thinking, we're thinking not just of themselves, but they're thinking of others and social awareness. They're thinking about how this decision will impact others. So really, these are the key tenants and we have way more resources than the circle. But for tonight's point, this is the reference when we're talking about social emotional learning. When talking about social emotional learning, this really is talking about small steps across all staff members, between staff and family, with student groups, and that's all the way from district leadership to the classrooms. This is really tier one work that can be universally applied and delivered throughout the entire district. To that end, we've provided daily practices or daily S E L practices as examples of things that you can do that you can do each day. And the rec, uh, subcommittee recommendation was for each school site to adopt at least one S E L practice that they can implement each day. And that this can be anything from checking in with students through formal or informal means greetings. There's a whole host of examples of things that can be S E L practices day-to-day that don't require purchasing a curriculum or doing anything really formal and standardized, but they do have evidence behind them. In looking at relationships, it is really up to all of us to believe and embody and, and practice this work in our meetings, in our one-on-ones, in our classroom teachings, and that it really is implemented at the school and at home. And so we, I have some resources later for home as well. Social emotional learning definitely starts with us. It starts with the adults. It starts with us caring for ourselves with self-care, caring for each other, taking the time to learn what we may not already know. And hopefully, we're all lifelong learners. As well as developing and modeling, which is then reflected and trickled down to the students. If in our district meetings, we're, we're embracing S E L, we will do that at site level. The site level will do it with the, with teachers. Teachers will do it with their students. And so we want to show that we're all willing to be vulnerable and take something that's maybe a little bit scary and take that step to practice it and, and show that vulnerability so that it's repeated throughout, throughout our district. And the relationships really are the biggest protective factor for students and is to have at least one positive relationship with an adult in their lives. To birdwalk for just a second, September is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. And this is something we're really emphasizing in our literature here, which is that if a student can have at least one positive adult relationship, it will prevent them from having serious mental illnesses or mental issues in the future. And so we really want to focus on social emotional learning is the way that you can build those relationships with your students and with your peers and with your staff. So one of the main things in working through social emotional learning is having clear, consistent, and proactive communication. This is something we heard from several subcommittees, which is really the need for, yes, clear and consistent, but also the timing of the communication to the staff being before it goes out to other members so that they, they feel informed and knowledgeable about what's going on. And I believe that was already spoken to earlier today. But this is, the biggest bang for our buck is in being clear, consistent, and proactive in our communication because it builds those relationships that I was just referring to. And it's also a trauma-informed practice because it's building consistency, predictability, and routine. And those things alone ensure trust and safety among our relationships. Moving on to staff support, morale, and self-care, some suggestions that the staff subcommittee recommended were structured check-ins like a teacher would do with their students, but a side administrator could do with their teachers. District office staff could do with each other, again, living it throughout the district. And to share and promote self-care resources, which we do have links in within our wellness, mental health, and social emotional learning site at Educate Everywhere. To rethink staff meetings and professional development, we've already spoken a little bit about colleague-to-colleague or C to C. But really, thinking about how those times can be used, not just to focus on academic rigor, but how can we build those positive relationships? How can we work on one to five areas of social emotional learning within that time and really make it explicit? Professional development would be those Wednesdays would be C to C as well as taking time to review the resource, the abundant resources that have been provided through Educate Everywhere and school social emotional learning, which has many take and go back to school activities in there as well. The student, the staff support subcommittee also provided some examples of staff morale building, teacher with staff weekly self-care meetings. I know of one school site where a teacher is offering to her peers, just, just come check in with me. Let's, let's talk. Let's talk about how you're doing. So that's another example they gave as well as a, a sample of a timeline for communication. Parent support, I believe we actually already touched upon these. The only things that weren't already spoken about were perhaps the use of facilitated conversations from the subcommittee as in for student support. There was use of potentially room parents, talking about going back to room parents who could perhaps assist with students who could be in social bubbles as well as parent toolkits, which I have provided through the Educate Everywhere resources in terms of the home social emotional learning document. And lastly, for data collection, we're talking about both formal and informal data collection. So those check-ins we're doing with students, even if they're informal, you know, thumbs up, them down, if they're Google surveys, we're going to keep those. We're going to see how our students are doing. And we're going to look over time at what that pattern looks like for individuals and for a classroom, and then eventually for a school site as well. And then the last thing I'll speak about a little bit is, and then Rebecca can speak to a little bit more, is the referrals for our tier three mental health services, which we also are collecting information on, seeing what are the most common issues that come up with those referrals. And I will pass it over to Rebecca.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm going to piggyback and capitalize on a lot of what Sandra has already said in terms of fleshing out how we've taken the subcommittee recommendations and either are living them or how we're getting in, moving in the direction of living them. This is an MTSS pyramid that is used in this case to organize mental health and social emotional wellbeing and issues for this district. A lot of where we want to focus our energy and attention is at the tier one level because that is meant to benefit every single student in our schools. So if we concentrate our efforts there, we're able to reach more students and address more needs. Students who do not benefit from tier one anything, get a more intensive version of a tier one intervention in tier two. So it's just more specifically tailored to them. And then students who still don't benefit from tier two get, move up into tier three. So tier three is looking a little lonely up there, but I'll talk a little bit about how it's not, even though it looks that way. So most of our attention at this point is focused on tier one. And you've heard it from multiple speakers this evening that our focus is really on social emotional learning for our students. It was before COVID and it certainly is now. A lot of the initiatives that we're using for, for S E L at this point for social emotional learning are to as, to embed them as adult practices so that they become more embedded in classrooms. So S E L is, is essentially our foundational lens to address burnout from our staff, compassion fatigue, and any secondary trauma that they might be experiencing by virtue of their own lives and supporting their students. We are using it also as our lens to increase self-compassion and mindfulness. Some of this has taken place in our C to C meetings. Sandra and I did C to C focused on mindfulness at the end of last year. And are planning for any other means of delivering that information to, to staff at this point. And a lot of our conversations so far have been giving teachers examples of how to implement S E L practices on a daily basis. Our consultation with administrators is, at this point, has been, you know, if you have a curriculum, how can you make that curriculum easy enough for the teachers to adapt? If you don't have a curriculum, let's default to Castle. It's been a lot of observing in classrooms to find out what the flow of the classroom is, what are the values of the teacher, and then designing S E L around that. The teachers want to be there for their students and not all of them are completely comfortable with S E L and as are other adults too. It is kind of touchy-feely for some people and that's not necessarily what they're used to doing. So it's been a lot of support for them to be able to, to live S E L practices in a way that is also comfortable for them. In terms of clear and ongoing communication, there's a lot of data being collected now in terms of where the students are, what they're engaging, how they're engaging, what are their barriers to engagement? That's been a lot of the first couple of weeks of school. We've done formal and informal surveys like Sandra had alluded to. We've done formal and informal surveys, like Sandra had alluded to. We have done need surveys, and we'll continue to do them. We had a parent question and answer session over summer that was specifically focused on mental health. So what were the specific needs and questions of the parents in the district? And then we got together and recorded a session where we addressed them. So we're trying to make sure that we're living that subcommittee recommendation on a regular basis so that everyone is on the same page. Where it says, "Parents as partners," we have school psychs, mental health counselors, any number of people that also support this work throughout the district to be creating content for parents to use with their kids. A lot of that is around S E L. So how do we create S E L content and disseminate it to parents so that they can use the language and interventions involved in S E L with their children at home? So that's been an ongoing conversation. What does S E L look like in the classroom? And let's help teachers to envision that and to have that be part of their daily practice. And what does it look like at home so that parents can be using the same language? A lot of S E L is at-school opportunities to connect. And so creating those opportunities in the virtual space, because we don't have them at school right now. And a lot of those side conversations, "What are you eating for lunch? How's your weekend? What are you watching? What are you doing?" They don't really have opportunities to do that right now. So how do we recreate that? And then how do we give them a space to be able to talk about how they feel about what is going on right now, because everyone is struggling? And so how do we get strength from acknowledging that we're all in difficult situations and circumstances? How do the teachers create those opportunities, leverage those conversations, and how can they be continued at home? Staff trainings, we've done, or we're working on a lot of staff trainings related to multi-tiered systems of support, which are essentially tiered service provision, this triangle that you're seeing here that you've hopefully seen before. Cognito, which is training to identify when students are at risk of harm to themselves. So how to make sure that you recognize the warning signs and you can address them and intervene appropriately. We've had staff trainings and conversations around culturally responsive practices, cultural sustainability. And I mean, the impetus for this related to the students not being in school has really ratcheted up the pressure for making sure that we know how to respond if students are in crisis and that we have really good pre-intervention, intervention, and post-intervention for suicide. And some of that falls in line with the state of California, what we're required to do. And then it's also just how we've adapted it to being in the virtual space. CareSalus is our concierge linkage to help our staff, students, and families to access mental health supports in the community. So we've done trainings on warm handoffs. That's been a lot of conversation now for who needs what and how are we meeting needs at school, and how do we partner so that students are getting support outside of school as well? And also to make sure that our staff are feeling supported and they get what they need to be able to do their jobs. Our M U S D district and school websites, Sandra did a phenomenal job collecting mental health resources. She continues to add to that folder. If you haven't seen it, you really should. It's comprehensive, and it is just an amazing place to find resources. The schools have also developed their own websites, or they have their own websites and have added mental health resources to their websites as well. We have recorded parent question and answer sessions, and then an extensive list of community-based mental health and crisis resources. P B I S, which is Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, that has been our guidepost for classroom management in terms of making it so that classrooms are safe and predictable places where everyone takes shared responsibility for the safety of everyone. So we've done a lot of work once COVID hit, and now to make sure that we're adapting all of the work that was done at-site for clear expectations and reinforcing behaviors we want to see into the virtual space with all the challenges that that brings. And then we also have extensive community partnerships with agencies such as the Hurd Alliance that does a lot of suicide intervention and post-intervention. Santa Clara County Behavioral Health for that community support and working hand-in-hand with community agencies and Connect, Thrive, and Survive, which is again related to risk assessment and promoting resilience at our sites. Those are some of the things that are taking place at tier-one. Like we said before, tier-two is just an intensified version of interventions at tier-one for people that are not appearing to respond. So that it's specifically tailored to whatever skills not being developed, so, or not being shown rather, in tier-one. Whatever we're not seeing, we define and create more intensive interventions at tier-two to give people more opportunities, more reinforcement, more instruction if there's a specific social emotional skill that they're having trouble following or displaying. And then kids that are not responding at that tier move up to individual counseling at tier-three. We have mental health counselors at all the elementary sites. We continue to have Cassie as our community-based agency partner at the middle and the high schools. All of the counseling that's being done right now is being done virtually over HIPAA and FERPA-compliant platforms. All of our staff were trained at the end of last year, and any new staff that came in this year had received training on how to deliver social emotional behavioral supports virtually, how to make sure that we're protecting the confidentiality of our students and that we have really good protocols for when it needs to be broken and how we're storing students' information and protecting them in that manner as well. Individual counseling is what happens between whoever's providing it and whoever is receiving it. But in this case, it also means working with the parents to help them understand what is happening so that we understand what is going on in the unique circumstances and strengths that each of our students and families presents to us and to make sure that we're leveraging those strengths to make sure that we're doing the best that we can with the situation we all find ourselves in. So it's bi-weekly communication with parents. It also is bi-weekly communication and consultation with teachers to make sure that whatever interventions are being used, behaviors can be reinforced in the setting in which they occur so that it is struggling with, yes?
Just to interrupt for a moment. You and Sandra have presented a wealth of information about our social emotional learning, as well as going into our supports that we have for students, especially around mental health. And I know we've done study sessions before specifically about social emotional supports for our students and how you and Rebecca are moving us away from being totally reliant on outside counseling support like Cassie. And so I really appreciate that we now in our elementary have all mental health professionals that are M U S D. And because it's 7:02, I'm going to move us on. And before I do that, I would like to ask you, if you'll reach out to some of those organizations that you mentioned, such as the Hurd Alliance, and invite them to come to our perfect partnership with M U S D and community-based organizations. The link is on the Eventbrite, and it's also on the front page of our website. That'd be terrific if you wouldn't mind inviting them. Who do we have next, Ms. Rodriguez?
So next, we have Parwinder, who is going to wrap up the Student and Parent Engagement Outreach. A lot of what we've already mentioned in every single one of our presenters. So she put a little good bow on those two last slides. And then we will have Cindy, not doctor, but Director Cindy Hugh, who is going to talk to us about where we are with the nutrition. Parwinder.
Thank you, Norma. So student and parent engagement and outreach also is a tiered system. With S P ninety-eight, tier-one is that we've got to ensure daily attendance, that synchronous and asynchronous instruction is happening every day. And then, how are we going to know the students are learning? Is through assignments and project completion? And then they're monitoring the progress. And then we're communicating with our parents using various communication tools, right? Parent Square, the Google Classroom CSO, making phone calls, you know, the teachers calling the parents when the students are not engaged. Parent-to-parent, I'm sorry, and also email, but that's all tier-one. Want to make sure that all those things are happening in tier-one. And then I also attached the re-engagement plan that Greg talked about on this slide. And those are really steps for the sites. In tier-one, this is going to happen. In tier-two, these are some of the strategies for parent and student engagement in tier-three. Okay, next slide. And then identify the barriers to disengagement quickly. We know our students and families are not the same, so the barriers are going to be different. And then respond with urgency. Is it technology? What can we do right away if they don't have access? Is there a language? Is it social emotional? And who do we reach out to? So the response has to be urgent. And that's where Greg talked about, if tier-one and tier-two, the sites need support from district level, then they would reach out to Raquel, me, or a special ed, Sandra, and Rebecca for social emotional, other strategies or other resources we can provide. But at the end of the day, from all of this learning, what we need to do is be proactive with our parents, knowing that we have these barriers, even from last time. What can we do is parent-to-parent connection workshops? And we know that's repeated in all of us. So that means that's really a priority in how we can come together as a team. This idea came to my mind that maybe we need to all meet together, social emotional, me, for S E Ls, and say, "This is how our parent-to-parent connection workshops need to look like." So that way we have a plan and that we're not, you know, trying, you know, I'm doing my E L parents, and then you guys are working on the social emotional, special ed parents, because we overlap a lot. So I guess that would be my wrap-up, that we need to kind of come together and figure out how we're going to support our parents.
Thank you, Parwinder. And I'd like to invite Cindy to talk to us about what we're doing in terms of ensuring that we provide school nutrition to all of our students.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I will be speaking about nutrition services. Since the start of the new school year, all of our cafeterias have been open to offer nutritious meals to our students. We were required to serve meals based on eligibility, and we experienced very low participation for a number of reasons. So we did targeted outreach and made sure families knew that we were open, and they knew about our meal service. Then last Monday, on August thirty-first, United States Department of Agriculture, USDA, announced the approval of districts to operate the Seamless Summer Program through December twenty-twenty, or as long as funding is available. So this is the waiver that we've been advocating for. We are now allowed to open to the community and serve free meals to all youth regardless of their individual eligibility. Our cafeteria immediately transitioned to the Seamless Summer Program the very next day. So we serve from three hundred meals to two thousand meals. We are providing meals for five days now. USDA has not approved for weekend meals yet. Currently, we're still processing meal application despite the free meals program. We want to encourage families to submit meal applications in case if we do need to revert back to national school lunch program in the near future. And also, our schools do rely on free and reduced meals data for funding. Lastly, the next couple of days, we will be sending out a survey through Parent Square to solicit feedback from the families about the schedule and how we can better support them around the meal pickup. And that's it for school nutrition.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you so much to the entire team. And now, understanding that it is past our time, we are open for any comments or questions. But we also like to encourage the public and also the board to continue to send us any questions and recommendations and comments that you might have through the website, the superintendent's comments website.
Okay. I will call in Scott to read the public comment. Scott?
Okay. I just have one right now for study session, and it's again from Robert Jung of Park Victoria Drive. And he says, "Will you be able to provide how many cases in each of the tiers? As well as what are the number of needs from parents, teachers, and staff over time for this year?" That's his comment.
I think what Mr. Jung might be asking for is, will we be able to provide some kind of support, some kind of report regarding the support that we provided to our families over time? And the answer is yes.
I have a quick comment. Thank you all for the study session and deep dive and wealth of information. The thing I've heard the most is parent support, parent engagement, parent partners. And that's truly important, you know, in my conversations with parents in the community. That's the number-one thing they're looking for as far as parent support because they want to understand what type of etiquette should they perform to help their student or child be successful in this environment? You know, we've already saw one school having to send a communication out in regards to how a parent should behave in the room, being a room partner. So in that regard, I really want the team to continue to explore that, continue to help parents be socially and emotionally prepared to help their student. Learning is not easy for a student. You, as a parent, have a two-way window, meaning you, for the first time, get to sit in the classroom and see what your student's learning. But teachers can see what's happening on the other side, in the room with you being a parent, supporting your child. So this is universal. We're all in this together. And I applaud the team for continuing to look at that as a parent support.
I'd like to give my remarks again. I echo my fellow board member. Thank you all so much for the presentations and the hard work. And there's that saying, "It takes a village to raise a child," and I think that's more true now than ever before. A lot of parents are in this new situation where they are at home and kind of having to look over their kid's shoulder. And it's new for everyone, but you know, to whatever degree, we can share our expertise as educators and help those parents figure out what they should be doing at home, share some best practices. That's going to be super helpful, especially for our special-needs students because unfortunately, there's some of the students who are having the most trouble adapting to this pandemic. So we got to look out for them. Thank you all.
All right. It is seven-eleven. I'd like to thank the team for the presentation. We should get a three-minute break and continue in open session. Again, thank you, team.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Um, David and Scott, are we ready? Superintendent, are we ready?
Yes, we're ready to go.
All right. Oh, that's a timer. We're just right on time. All right, good evening, everyone. Uh, welcome to Milpitas Unified School District regular meeting. This is the open session. I would like to call this meeting to order and we're going to do the roll call. Hon Lin, I'm here. Chris Norwood.
Here.
Kelly Yip Chuan.
Here.
Michael Si. Min Go.
Here.
All right. Um, I guess Michael is not on here. All right, we will move on to our. So in closed session, um, the board unanimously accepted the retirement letter of a certificated manager. The effective date will be June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. And now, um, do I have a motion to approve and review the open session agenda?
Motion to approve the open session agenda.
There's a motion is. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I did not hear from Michael.
I'm here.
Okay, would you please participate in this meeting?
Yes, I just got back.
All right, thank you. Uh, seeing that, the agenda is approved. Uh, let's have our flag salute. Scott? Please give me the flag. And Michael, since you're standing up, would you lead us in the flag salute?
Of course.
Thank you.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of Washington, T N, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Michael. All right, comments from the public. Members of the public may address the board on any subject not on tonight's agenda. However, provisions of the Brown Act, Government Code five four nine five four point two A and point three preclude any action. As an unentertained item, no responses required from the board or district staff and no action can be taken. However, the board may instruct the superintendent to agenda any item for a future meeting. If you would like to address the board or any item on the agenda or one that does not appear on the agenda, please go to www.musd.org, complete the public comments contact form, click submit. On the, for items on the agenda, your comments will be read into the record under comments from the public portion on the agenda. And for items on the, on the agenda, your comment will be read at the time of that item. The district asks for the contact information from all those wishing to speak so that staff can follow up on issues brought to our attention. Thank you for your participation in this civic engagement. I'm going to move on to M U S D two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty-one strategic goals.
Oh, we have comments from the public.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Scott.
No worries, no worries. Um, got a few. So the first one is from Tina Ortiz representing Milpitas N V P A L softball. Um, she's up Dixon Landing Road. And her comment is, we won't, uh, we thank the M U S D board for taking on the task of finding a new location for softball fields for the girls of the community. The city has notified us that this process will take sixty days, but sixty days is too long. We are expected to begin planning for the twenty twenty-one spring season this fall. And with no home fields in sight, the ability to plan is hopeless. With ninety families currently registered from last season's cancellation, it is pertinent, we have assuring information for them. The longer the district takes to work out details with this, work out details with the city, the more it hurts our organization. It is important from this point on, we work together and make this matter urgent. Thank you for caring about young women in the community. And the next one is from Teresa Stevenson, also of Milpitas North Valley P A L softball and of Greenwood Way. And she states, hello, my daughters play softball at Russell, but we live near Rancho. I know that the current fields at Russell will no longer be our home fields. I usually walk through Senate area and see that there is space there. Is this a possibility? This would be great for my family since I have girls who play softball. Thanks. All right, and the next one is from Marie Edwards, also from softball and North Park Victoria Drive. And she says, hello, just wanted to see if there are any updates on the fields for softball. Please make our girls a priority. And the last uh, one that I have right now is from Chris Martin of Blue Spruce Court. And he says, here is what to post. At last week's special ed P T A meeting, I was quite offended that Michael Si would show up at seven fifty eight P M the very end of the meeting to just say thanks for attending the meeting. This continues the trend of perplexing behavior of one of our board members. Recently, at the last board meeting, instead of highlighting students from our district, he made everyone sit through a presentation from another school district. I want to know what our kids are doing to make Milpitas better, not other cities. The trend of Michael Si being somewhat present is always very perplexing. Has anyone really seen him since COVID started? All the other board members safely get out and support our schools and community. He will say he is just being safe, but everyone from the president to the mayor gets out. Why is he special? What is he hiding? As a parent, we need board members who show up and get work done, not worry about how many marshmallows the district is receiving. And let me just check. Oh, I got a couple more. Uh, this one is from Charles Schletzbaum of Milpitas High School, also Milmont Drive. M H S Speech and Debate is holding the Stephen Stewart Memorial Speech and Debate Tournament September twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh. We would love to have community and staff volunteer to judge some events. A volunteer forum will be posted soon. And Charles, if you send me that info, I can get it up as well. Um, let's see, uh, name Karen Na. Um, this is Milpitas as a home address. Good evening, Board uh, of Trustees and Superintendent Cheryl Jordan. There are real concerns regarding Zoom hackers with Milpitas Educate Everywhere platform. Please share with parents what M U S D is doing to protect the children of Milpitas from exposure of inappropriate content. There are several classes affected from this activity. It is important that parents know what is being done from future attacks. And that's all the public commented this time.
Thank you, Scott. And sorry about that.
No worries. Superintendent Jordan, could you bring back um, data to the next board meeting regarding or um, regarding the, the last comment about the Zoom attacks? And then the other items, we will discuss as appropriate.
Thank you, Chris. All right, moving on to item thirteen, M U S D two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, strategic goals. Build a culture of we that engages parents, staff and community partners in supporting students' success. Improve communication systems for better outreach to parents, students and staff. Develop educational pathways that allow students to apply their passion in learning for the future careers. Focus services and support system to ensure that all students are engaged in their learning and are making social, emotional and academic gains. Identify creative student-focused strategies to accommodate enrollment growth and ensure healthy learning environment. Superintendent's report. Superintendent Jordan.
Thank you. Tonight in the culture of we, we have several people to acknowledge. And first, I would like to acknowledge our Knights of Columbus as well as Assistant Principal Jonathan Mock and Community-Based Instruction Teacher Gary De Guzman. And before we go into what the grant is that we are receiving through the Knights of Columbus, I'd like to introduce our Grand Knight of the St. Elizabeth Council of Knights of Columbus, Mr. Ali Santos. And also our District Deputy of the Knights of Columbus, Mr. Tim Cruz. And the Financial Secretary, Andy Dyson. And Trustee Guillermo Yerobe, as well as Member of Knights of Columbus, Charles Hudson. That we know every year that our local Knights of Columbus is very generous and contributing funds to our high school and post-secondary classes that serve our students with the most exceptional needs. And they generally do this through donations that they receive from their good work, such as doing car washes. This time, it's a little different because it involves a grant. And I will first like to ask the Grand Knight, Mr. Gwana Ali Santos, to tell us a little bit about the grant and why it is such a special thing that Milpitas is receiving this ten thousand dollar grant. And then I would like to invite Assistant Principal Jonathan Mock to share with us what he wrote and uh, summarizing what the monies will be used for. So Grand Knight, uh, Gwana Ali Santos. And also I believe there's a picture of Mr. Ali Santos giving the check to Assistant Superintendent Brunson. So Scott, if you could put that up there? There you go. Thank you. Mr. Ali Santos. Um, Mr. Ali Santos, would you like to say a few words?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, for a while I thought uh, we have a problem with the audio. Um, okay, good, good evening, uh, school board member, uh, superintendent. Uh, brothers, you know, Knight of Columbus and uh, everybody else, um, again, you know, good evening. It's an honor to be here. As you all know, uh, the Knights of Colum- uh, Columbus is no stranger to Milpitas Unified School District. We have worked together for many, many years, even long before uh, my involvement with the Knights of Columbus. And every year, we respond for uh, people with intellectual disability, uh.
Uh, you just muted yourself.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I thought I, for a while I had an echo, so, all right. Uh, okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, so year after year, we work pretty hard together. Uh, this is not just one person's job, but it's, it's a teamwork. And uh, this year is very, very special because uh, uh, Milpitas Unified School District, uh, working with us, put together the uh, application for the grant and uh, the grand prize is ten thousand dollars. And uh, I'm glad to report that, yes, indeed, uh, Milpitas Unified School District uh, is the winner, that ten thousand dollar grant. So congratulations. And uh, and here's another thing that I'd like to mention, the, the fact that uh, we also uh, did, you know, the annual fundraising. So this is on top of what we have done. Um, in February this year, uh, Council eighty-seven forty-seven donated uh, six thousand five hundred and nine dollar and forty-three cents. So this really brings the to- the grand total to sixteen thousand five hundred and nine and forty-three cents for the year twenty twenty. So congratulations. And having said that, I'd like to add that uh, we, St. Elizabeth Council eighty-seven forty-seven express our gratitude to officers, members, uh, donors, supporters, uh, St. Elizabeth Parish community, school officials, teachers, parents, students, and all volunteers and, you know, families and friends for the strong support to make this possible. This is, this has not been an, an easy job, as a matter of fact, a lot of hard work and a lot of people involved. Um, and again, you know, thank you. Um, I'm gonna uh, send this uh, a press release uh, to our media contacts and also I'm gonna send you a copy of it and uh, it looks like you already got a picture of it and uh, there was one request as a, you know, protocol from the Colombian Foundation. And I'm gonna read the last line here of the letter. Please provide a written, respond to me by email or letter to confirm the receipt of the grant award check. And I believe you already have that letter. I already forwarded that letter. Um, and I'll work with you to make sure that, you know, that the foundation receives uh, the, uh, the written receipt also. Okay, and you know, and again, thank, thank you very much and congratulations. And we certainly look forward to continue doing this. Uh, this is not just one-time thing, so uh, we encourage you to also apply again in the future. Uh, and having with that, okay, that concludes my presentation. And um, I'd like to open the floor also for any possible, uh, you know, officer or neighbor Columbus who want to speak.
Thank you so much, uh.
All right, thank you.
Allison Tosa.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Very much. And I remember you said when you called me that uh, there were many across the country who applied for this grant and only a couple were selected. And speaking of those who were the grantees, I'd like to ask Assistant Principal Jonathan Mock and our teacher Gary De Guzman to share just the very highlights of what the funding will provide.
Oh, yes. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Allison Tosa, and thank you, Cheryl, uh, Superintendent Jordan. Uh, it, it wasn't just, um, when we wrote this, we were very excited to be able to have an opportunity to be able to um, find new opportunities for our students. And so when this opportunity came up, uh, we met as a team trying to figure out uh, what was needed. Um, and it was. And it was through meeting with some of our parents who said that our students with exceptional needs need a platform to be able to help them with life skills. And so, you know, with the coordinator last year, we went out to one of the schools that specifically helps students with needs. They focused just on that, and we were able to see a area that had this. And that was like the genesis of all the ideas for the grant. And so I'm gonna share a quick story. Hopefully, this won't take too long. I was, I, you know, after we submitted everything, I had called, and they called back, and they asked for more information. We supplied them with more information. And then over the summer and through the year, we didn't get anything, and we were sort of like, oh, we tried, and we tried, and we didn't get anything. And then the day that my Department Chair Suzanne, who was on the call, and who I'd like to say something about, that we worked really hard on it, she had had a very bad mishap with her car, which costs about the same amount as the grant that we got. And so we were so sad, and I said, oh, Suzanne, it's gonna be okay. And then Principal Rojas came out and then said, I'm sorry for the car, but I have some good news. And I said, this better be good. And he said that we had this, and we looked at each other, and and then we're like, oh, my God, like, what are we gonna do? And we told our teacher, Gary De Guzman, who was also on the call about it, and we were so excited, so excited for the moment that we forgot everything. And then after the day, we looked back, and it was time to go. We looked at her car again, and she just... Well, and then, you know, but we still got the grant. So we're super excited. We want to be able to outfit, be portable, or an area there for our kids. I know our kids really need it. Our parents are gonna be super happy when we start building, you know, appliances and stuff there so that kids can have tactical mobile area just to be able to work and practice some of the very very necessary skills that they're gonna need over and over again, instead of going out to the community. Now we have something here. So we're really excited about that. I don't know if Suzanne or Gary wanna jump in and say anything. I'm so sorry it took so much time. I just had to share that story because I thought it was really funny. Suzanne?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to share out that we, as a team at the high school, listened to what the parents were asking for. And we looked into different ideas as to what we could do to support them. And when Assistant Principal Jonathan Mock said, hey, we have this opportunity, can you do some research? I jumped at the chance and spent quite a bit of time researching how much we needed, what we needed in order to make a life lab at Milpitas High very feasible. And again, what he said is, we never heard anything, and we were like, oh, we didn't get it. But then, when this all transpired last week, it was such a great feeling to know that we can meet the needs of our students and make our parents see that we are really trying to work out everything, especially in the CBI world. And again, we did a lot of research on different things that we would need for this program and are very excited to find the space and get this up and running.
And then Gary, I don't know if you had anything to add. I don't know if he's...
You see, I'm still here.
Yeah.
To figure out how to unmute myself. I just wanted to say, on behalf of my current students and future students, thank you to everyone involved in making this possible. Through all your hard work, you've given us like great, great opportunity to be able to further the skills and development of the CBI students and help help them to work on and develop those life skills that'll serve them long after they leave us and just help develop that independence. But thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, team. And again, thank you to the Knights of Columbus. As you can hear, your impact is tremendous, and the work that will benefit our learners with exceptional needs. And it's really learning life skills so they can gain some independence as they move on from high school. So thank you. The next group I would like to recognize is our Maintenance Operations and Transportation Team. Last board meeting, you might remember that we recognized the student nutrition. This time, it's MOT, and throughout the shelter in place and the summer months, MOT made many things possible everywhere from ensuring that we could come to work to helping disinfect and clean so that we could provide all those $479,000 $479,000 meals that student nutrition provided over the summer. And providing safety and all of the social distancing markings and the signs that you see when you go to all of our classrooms and also to our workplaces. And I'd like to share something with you. I asked at the beginning of the summer, our buyer contract extraordinaire is Kelly Ng. And I asked her about purchasing barriers that we could use for some of our classrooms where it's difficult for students to keep social distancing, such as in our CBI class. And the cheapest thing that she found was $300. So last week I was out and about, and I saw something similar. And I sent a picture to our MOT Director, Mr. Brian Shreve. And look at what they shared with me today. They created this for only $65. It achieves the same thing as those $300 things. And we'll be able to provide many more of them to the classrooms for our youngest learners, as well as our students with exceptional needs where social distancing will be difficult. So I want to thank all of our MOT team for the hard work that you do. And I want you all to know how tremendously valuable your work is to us. And it is every day, even when it's not COVID times. And you always find a way to rise to the occasion. So I want to thank you to our leaders. We have Abner Ames, we have our Director Brian Shreve, our Supervisors Edgar Milton and Mike, and we have several others here with us tonight, too. We have Mustafa and Mike Fisher. And I would like to invite any of you, if you'd like to say a quick word. If not, that's okay, too. Just know that we hold you in tremendous esteem for the work that you do to keep us going.
Thanks, Cheryl. It gives me great honor to lead a group of people such as this. So driving to work this morning, thinking back, not quite six months ago, we weren't quite in the same circumstances and thinking back about challenges, hurdles, and all the changes and directions and pivots all of us have been making. And I think about the staff when we call them back to close playgrounds and we work with staff to take care of the essential needs. We met in Zoom settings with the CSCA and our department and leaders of the department, and we came together and really made a difference. Their willingness to be flexible when we needed them to, and it's constant, continues to be. So my hat's off to all people that we have in Maintenance Operations and Transportation. The bus drivers, they have been phenomenal. They've been great at taking on responsibilities other than bus driving, since we're not bus driving. They helped with the textbook checkout at Milpitas High School. Some of them are subbing as a custodian when we need them. Picking up furniture that was donated from an organization and distributing it. They're gonna go out and disinfect playgrounds at the Child Development Center at Rose. The list goes on and on, and I can't thank every single one of them enough. Rowan at the helm keeps us in check and makes sure that we're doing what we're doing and make sure that things get handled. So I'll be quiet and let anybody else speak, but my hat's off to every single one.
Thank you, Brian.
So Mike here, I'm one of the supervisors that that got to see the little boots on the ground for, you know, during this this lightning storm we had and the power outage to several of our schools and and seeing our staff just jump on the opportunity to serve. You know, and me as a supervisor, just watching these guys and gals, you know, even just by putting up lanterns and bathrooms and going through sites and doing what needs to be done through this power outage, you know, and and seeing, not only that, but, you know, I know Sandy's staff got to last weekend, but last time, but and even them as well, just seeing those people shine. So being here 28 years, you know, you get to see a lot of stuff, and a lot of stuff happens in facilities. And you say, okay, this is just another day in facilities. But, you know, this was a week that was just super crazy. And just not, I mean, it really, I've never seen anything like this from the eighty-nine earthquake, and people coming together and wanting to just do. So anyway, hats off to, again, to the crew and MOT, and as well as those who put that extra mile to go with all this. Thank you for letting me share.
Yes, thank you, all of you. Thank you for being creative innovators and leaders because we depend on you. I'd like to next recognize our African Ancestry Success Committee. This is a group of role model leaders who came together in 2018. They met, and we met in a Milpitas High School library, talking about a vision and experiences for our learners in Milpitas Unified of African Ancestry. And from there, the team decided to forge a compact and a vision, and it became the African Ancestry Success Committee. This is the beginning of the third year. And I'm excited that they now have expanded to including parent leaders. And it's a group that includes classified, certificated, and management, all as a team, and doing all that they can to support our students. And I'd like to share my screen against that you can see their website, which is located in our website. And if you explore it, you'll see some of the different activities that they've done over the last couple of years, all with a focus on ensuring that our learners see their culture, their history, and the contributions that help to make them who they are. And I would like to make sure that we acknowledge our leaders, and that would be Derek Brant, who is our parent leader, and Alicia Padilla, David Kennedy, Sean England, Deanna Satan, Cheryl Rivera, Damon James, Nicole Stewart, Ian Moore, Jonathan Payne, Herm Wilson, Carissa Scott, Margie Jackson, Annie Handy, and Chris Norwood. And periodically throughout the year, there are others who join in the effort to ensure that we have a strong network of support to ensure the success of all of our learners of African ancestry. So I'd like to invite any of those members to share a few words if they would like.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Jordan. I appreciate this recognition. Thank you very much, Board. I appreciate this. As a member of ASK, it has been really a wonderful opportunity to get together. I think Deanna told me something very special, it's like, if we didn't have this program, we would not have been able to get to know each other as well as we have. So there's been some really great overt benefits and some convert benefits that we have taken from this program. So I really appreciate it. And I do want to take the opportunity to thank all of the members of ASK. We've all been putting in a lot of effort, and we still have a lot to go. And it's good to see Alicia Padilla out there. Hello, Alicia. And I also want to do a quick plug for parents out there. We are looking for some parents to participate. So if you are interested, just shoot me an email, and I'll keep you up on the latest and the greatest that's happening. So thank you again for this recognition and honor.
I think we have time for another leader, if you want to say a few words.
Yes, hello.
Hi, Derek.
Hi, hey. My name is Derek Brant, designated unofficial of this group. First, I want to thank the the MUSD and all of the admin teachers and everyone who have paved the way to get to the point where parents are now involved. And you've done a lot of great programs, and so I don't like to call myself the leader, and so I want to pass that on to each.
Unfortunately, I think Derek froze. It sounds like he was going to say he wants to pass on the torch of leadership to every single person because it's a collaborative cause, a collaborative effort. And those are our recognitions for tonight.
Thank you, Superintendent Jordan. Thank you each and everyone for all the great work and for working so hard to get us where we are today. We are moving on to Superintendent Executive Cabinet's report.
Tonight, I would like to invite Lori Armino, our Principal of Senate Elementary, to share with us her principal's report.
All right. Hi, everybody. Good evening to the School Board, Executive Cabinet, and MUSD and all the community. Thanks for having us. I'm gonna give just a general update, and then I'm gonna invite Assistant Principal Vanessa Espedia to talk about our efforts of PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports. And then we will finish with fifth-grade teacher Amber Lawanson to give a little update from teacher's perspective. So I was amazed at how smooth the school year started. We were all nervous, but teachers and, you know, all staff across the district spent many hours over the summer trying to prepare for the opening of the year. And I think there was a lot of communication that went out to make sure that families knew exactly where they were supposed to be and how they were supposed to get on to their distance learning classes. Attendance for us has been extremely high. We average, you know, about three to seven absences per day. And out of 772 kids, three to seven absences is fantastic. And because they're so few, we're able to reach out personally to all those families and really figure out what it is that's to be absent. Getting used to the schedules, getting used to how to log in. And now, as we get more into the meat of the academics, really figuring out how to use all of the different programs that we have for our students. We want to use a lot of different programs because we want our education to be engaging for students and keep them wanting to come back. And then we also balance that with the social, emotional learning. So thank you to that team who gives us tips and tricks and things to do with kids every single week. And I know a lot of our staff are using those things to really build relationships in this sort of tough arena and getting to know kids, but also having kids get to know students in the classroom as well, which can be difficult during this time. So a lot of great work is happening. And now I'll have Vanessa talk about PBIS.
Yes, so we are super excited here at Senate. We are in our second year of implementing PBIS, and we have the wonderful lead of Sandra Quintana, who was our liaison for that program. The team did a lot of work from March until now, and they really, what they did is, and it's amazing, they modified, basically, it was all new to everybody, and created an online platform for students to continue to engage in being rewarded for positive behavioral, positive behavior at school. And so one of the things we were able to do with support of our PTA is to be able to purchase what's called PBIS Reward System. So it's an online system that we're able to use to continue to reward our students for positive behavior. Basically, what if we were at school? At school, before shelter in place, we had a store that we used when we rewarded students, and they were able to build up, you know, different different, get rewarded every week or so. They would come to the store, be able to get those rewards, whether it was, you know, a small item or a large item. Now with this system, we're able to continue. And this is a big thing because from March until June, we were we were in a little bit of trying to, like, trying to figure it out. And after we got the system this year, teachers are now able to create their own stores for students and really individualize it to really get them be promoted into the classroom and structures and behavior. And so the teachers are super excited about it. We're actually able to teacher rewards too. So just earlier today, I was able to give, said Lori, a teacher reward for her leadership at Senate, and she got an email and she gets points. And so those things are really good for us. We helped make the connection up at school, especially with virtual learning. So we're really super excited about that. But in addition to that, the PBIS team is getting ready to launch their Senate PBIS Parent Website. And so what that's going to do is kind of be able to help support all parents at the tier one level and give them the supports and strategies, right? That they might need at home to support their students in social emotional learning. And so we're really excited about that. I asked the team today, and I wanted to preview it, but we are waiting to have a Senate webinar for our parents before we actually have it go live. And that's something that we're super excited about, and we can't wait to get that started. So thank you. And now Mrs. Lawanson.
Hi. So yeah, I was just asked to speak about how the school year has been going from a teacher's perspective up to now. Overall, I would agree with Lori. It went better than expected the first few days, and overall, it's been going well. The fact that students know how to log on and how to do a number of things because of last year's Shelter in Place has helped that. And then we're just getting better with, okay, who needs a Chromebook? How do we get you on? Who needs some more training? So that's been working out pretty well. There are still some students who are very difficult to reach. And since we're not in person, they can avoid me a lot easier. So working to get them pulled back in and hopefully with the PBIS system in place now and my creating my own store, I'll be able to get those kids back in because they like the food prizes especially. Most of the kids do want to connect, though. They like to chat and have conversations. They want to be heard. And so I've done a number of one-on-one meetings and small group meetings. Another way we've been getting the kids engaged is by, some of the teachers are playing Pictionary. We're switching classes to kind of mix things up a little. Playing songs, though, having daily jokes and fun facts, doing scavenger hunts, just a lot of different things, and definitely sometimes house calls. But overall, I have to say it's going better than I anticipated. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's it for us. We are happy with how things are going, and we anticipate that there will be ups and downs as we continue on. You know, just like in this meeting, people freezing or getting kicked off or, you know, whatever those things are, we deal with them as they come. But I think that students are positive and parents are positive and appreciative and are getting the hang of things. And I'm super happy and proud of all of our Senate Wildcats.
Thank you. To our head, to the Wildcats. Thank you so much. I would like to invite Assistant Superintendent of Business Services Wendy Zhang to give her report.
Okay, thank you, Cheryl. I have three reports for tonight. The first is from our accounting and the payroll side. We officially closed out our 1920 book. So tonight, you will see in the board package, we have the income statement and state form and to share with the board. And I have to say, this summer was a very interesting summer. It was very unique because our Director of Business Services retired on June 30th. Lilia was the new manager, so she's learning along her way to close. To call, this is her first year-end closing. And we also shorted one staff. We did not fill in the accountant position. So we limited the staff, and we were able to successfully close out. So I'm very proud with the team. Second report is to echo what Sandy shared during the study session regarding the United States Department of Agriculture's announcement on August 31st to extend the summer stimulus program for all the school districts. So that means that during the school year now, we can provide a free breakfast and a lunch to all youth who is 18 or under. So this will help us to increase our meal participation. And ultimately, it'll also help us to reduce the financial gap of the program, the deficit. So that's really a good news. And hopefully, throughout the year, the USDA can also extend the program to allow us to serve weekend meals and holidays like we did in this summer. Lastly, is I would like to share with the board and the community to see if who is interested to we to serve in our Parcel Tax Oversight Committee. Currently, we still have a one vacancy to represent the senior group. And normally, we have a five representative from the local residents to form the committee, and we meet twice a year. And if you know anyone who is interested and we're looking for a senior representative, please feel free to connect me with the person, and I'll share more information with that person. So that's all my report for tonight.
Thank you, Wendy. A mute Superintendent.
Assistant Superintendent.
All right.
Thank you, Superintendent Jordan. Going along with, I have also three reports. One of the reports goes along to the close-in report that Assistant Superintendent Wendy Zhang is going to allude to. I was very proud in commanding Dr. Lopez with the CDC program because the 2019-20 academic year ended in the black. And if you recall, we have been, he has been working very hard to to ensure that that we did that. And so the work that he's done is phenomenal. We also wanted to highlight that as we are entering the four-week of the school, he has been serving a total of 57 students with an in-person from 7:30 to 5:30 and has 50 part-time students carrying out the distance learning program. Dr. Lopez and Principal Julian Abraham are working closely to finalize the plan so that we can provide that needed essential for childcare. The other couple of reports said, as you know, a high dosage in target tutoring is a research approved strategy to mitigate the learning loss that we talked about during the board study session. And we are working with a couple of partnerships. One of them is the Touch a Soul. They are poised to provide free tutoring services to 50 through six grade students in the Randall Corridor. And we are working very closely. They've already identified the tutors, are training the tutors. They had the tutors submit a complete resume and providing specific training for them. We will be bringing the board and MOU at the next board meeting. The other partnership that is going along the lines of providing targeted dosage of tutoring is the Milpitas San Jose City College Milpitas Extension, working in partnership with Russell Middle School and an elementary school partner so that we can do a cross-age tutoring program for 25 students. Very excited about those possibilities where we are working with our students so that they can also support other students within this realm of connecting with one another and supporting one another for student success. And that's my report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Narma. And that brings us to Assistant Superintendent of HR Jonathan Brunson.
Good evening, trustees and district staff and community of Milpitas. Want to, I hope everybody had an enjoyable Labor Day weekend. I know it was really hard with the record heat and the air quality. And we're still thinking about our families that may be affected by the fires and what have you. So please reach out to people, and if they need support, let us know so that we can take care of them. I want to thank Scott Forstner for continuing the wonderful work he's been doing on introducing our new employees to the district. Last year, I was able to take all their pictures and getting to meet with each of them as we onboarded. But this year, because of COVID, we're able to do that. So I'm encouraging you to send in your selfies or have somebody take a picture of you so we can get to meet you. It's a lot of fun to see you on the workplace and welcoming you to the Milpitas family. Also, I want to give a special shout out to the Quanis Club here. We put together the Kohl's Event, Carers for Kids, and almost 80 backpacks filled with school supplies and donations and gift cards for our students. And we had all but two come and pick up their backpacks. And I want to give a special shout out to Michael Mendezable for his work and his support, former trustee, and Karen Hanks, the former teacher here in our district, for her support in getting the backpacks ready. And then our key club president, Christina Din, you did a great job of rounding up some students to help us get the backpacks out, and we delivered them at Rose Elementary School. And it was fun to see our principals there, as well as see our community come in and share in the wonderful gifts that we can provide our students. Lastly, the, we're implementing a Helios program. It's a new HR platform, and we're going to do it very slowly. All our employees should have got a notice today. Our teachers and certificate staff and managers will be getting notices in the next day or two to inform them about the evaluation process. And eventually, we are attendance and tracking system for vacation and and a lot of other ways that we can go paperless across this district. But we're going to take it slow, so don't worry. And that's it for my report. Good evening.
Superintendent Jordan?
That's it.
Okay.
I don't have a PTA representative tonight.
You don't, because I saw the the name on there, PTA Council. She's not here. All right, we're moving on to board group agreements. Kelly.
Yip Chuan. Yes. The board agree, the the board group agreement are provided for the board's very reference as a reminder of our conduct as elected official. Provide, per Board by law 9001, admitted on November 26, 2019, board members and the superintendent agreed to: One, keep learning and achievement for all students as the primary focus. Two, ask questions for your own understanding. Three, be open and honest with each other. Four, no surprises, including unapproved communications with law enforcement, news media, regional elected officials on behalf of the district and or board. Five, be aware that our behavior in the community reflects us as a team. Six, communicate proactively with each other about topics, questions, and challenges in open sessions and in and events of public board meetings in compliance with the Brown Act. Seven, participate in professional development and commit the time and energy necessary to be an informed and effective leader. Be eight, actively support the culture of we in action deed and opportunity to serve the students and parents of the of the Milpitas Unified School District.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you. Moving on to board group agree, no, board communications. We'll start with you, Michael.
Hello, am I still muted?
No, we can hear you.
I'd like to go after the, let someone else go first.
The reason?
Well, I'm trying to pull up my calendar and go through all the things I did.
How long would it take you?
A minute, 30 seconds.
Okay, we'll wait for 30 seconds for you.
Okay, so, let's see. So I attended the elected officials' call with the county public health. I did some research about what possible new technologies could be deployed in the fight against the virus, as well as to mitigate learning loss. I went to some back-to-school night events. Yeah, that's my report.
Thank you. Minho?
Thank you, President Liang. Again, as far as activities, just to save time, you can follow my social media page to see the list of activities. I can see the rest of the time, the rest of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Yip Chuan.
The main one was volunteering at Milpitas High to distribute backpacks, school supplies, and masks. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Norwood?
Thank you, President Liang. I'd like to take the time for two pieces. One, I, the Santa Clara County School Board Association has recently formed Legislative Action Committee. One of the things that former President Dan Boebay had advocated for upon his departure, that we got more involved at the legislative level. And I'm pleased to announce that the Santa Clara County School Board Association has formed a Legislative Action Committee. We had our first meeting last week and developed a mission and vision statement in terms of how we're going to advocate, not only with, at the state level with legislators, but also locally with municipalities, other elected officials. I also took place last week, this week with the elected officials' call, had several meetings with the superintendent, as well as other stakeholders, as we try to reach that several part of last year before COVID-19, we talked about raising $20 million. So we are still actively involved in that project. So those are the things that I've been working on. But there's one other thing that I'd like to mention is that a couple of days ago, I ran into a wall, not a physical wall, but just a mental and emotional wall. And I began to feel overwhelmed and anxious and depressed somewhat about everything that's going on. And I actually took some of the advice of the Sandra Quintana in terms of the MUSD Educate Everywhere website, and began to look at some of those activities. And with the support of my family, we actually did some of those activities, and they were really refreshing. So I truly do advise everyone, if you're ever going through something, that there are a lot of resources out there that the and I know it's not fun going online and looking up the resources on your own, but in this instance, because I'm a very private person, I had to take that opportunity. And I do have to share the fact that it's very valuable, and I recommend it to anyone out there. That's my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I did. Last time I had the meeting with Rebecca and Sandra. So I started on meditating, which was great. I love it. For myself, I joined Kelly passing out the backpacks at Milpitas High. I had several meetings with the parents on the special ed. We had the team hall, and then I had the city school collaborative meeting with city. So that's my report. And now we are moving on to reports. Superintendent. Assistant Superintendent Business Services Wendy Zhang.
Okay, let me unmute. So this, this is not routine item. Every year after we close out the book, we will do a developer fee annual public report. And so the purpose of this developer fee report is to disclose a brief description of the developer fees collected and the amount of fee and the beginning balance of the account, and also the fees, how we spend the money. And we have attached a summary here. And what I'm going to do, I'm going to share my screen. Okay. So I can walk you through with this report. Can everyone see the report now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Okay, perfect. Okay. So this is our uh annual report for developer fee fund is a fund two fifty. We started with the beginning fund balance as of July first, twenty nineteen at four point four million. And throughout the year, we received a interest of eighty seven thousand. And our total developer fees collected is about nine hundred seventeen thousand. Just for your information, right now, our developer fee is at four dollar eight cents per square foot for the residential uh property. And for the commercial is about sixty six cents per square foot. And for total revenue in for the nineteen twenties school year, we it's over a million, one million four hundred thousand. I mean, one million four thousand. And this is a summary how we spend the developer fees. And we have about almost thirty four thousand on the administration fees because we have a staff, um, a portion of staff salary in the benefit that helps to monitor to run this program recorded here. And then the twelve thousand is the enrollment projection. That's the contract consultant fee to for our demographer. And then we have uh some punch list item for Meadows, uh phase one. And like basically those are the items and to finish out the classroom building and the classroom, uh the restroom. And so those are the costs. They are not significant. And then it's after phase one closed out from the previous one. And we spent about ninety one thousand here out of developer fee. So for a total expenditure of a hundred thirty seven thousand for the nineteen twenties school year. And with that, we have about five point three million ending fund balance in our developer fee plan. So this is just a report and um we share with the public and as our annual routine item after we close out the book. So I'm going to pause here for questions. So if no question, then uh I'll complete my report.
Thank you, Wendy.
So I'll stop sharing.
We are moving on to action item, Superintendent Jordan. Thank you, Wendy, for the report. Great news.
We have three action items. The first one is a resolution. It's for Latinx month. And that traditionally falls from September fifteenth to the middle of October. And I would like to turn this over to Scott.
Thank you so much. Uh, once again, I tapped our resources uh this time at um with the Latinx Student Union. And um our community liaison, Norma Morales, helped connect you with some students. And uh before we play the video of the uh new resolution, I wanted to mention the uh students' names that participated. We have Giselle Montiel Rodriguez, Ashley Andrea Magana, Alexander Ivan Guerras, Katrina Soquan Lima Guan, Annalise Jiang, Alan Guzman Gutierrez, and Nicole Rosales Romero. And they all did a a great job and we're going to play the video for you right now.
Whereas in nineteen sixty eight, President Lyndon Johnson started the Observation as Latinx Hispanic Heritage Week. In nineteen eighty eight, President Ronald Reagan expanded the week to a month, enacting it into law on August seventeenth, nineteen eighty eight. And
whereas the definition for Latinx used for a person of Latin American origin or descent, a gender neutral term sometimes used in Liu or La- of Latino or Latina, referencing Latin Americans' culture and their racial identity and
whereas Mopitas originated from the word milpa derived from the Nahuel, the world's milli defined as agriculture, field and pan, defined as on and whereas the city of Mopitas history dates back to the Spanish expeditions of the late eighteenth century and and are honored today with the preserve preservation of the Jose Maria Alviso Adobi and Jose Higera Adobi and
whereas Mopita's own city council members, Vice Mayor Bob Nunez, Camer Montano, and Karina Dominguez are making Latinx voices heard and making a change in the world and
whereas the experiences of the Latinx community is an important aspect of the United States and Mopita's rich and diverse culture and
whereas Latinx Heritage Month offers the opportunity to learn of the profound impact of Hispanics throughout history, including civil rights activist Cesar Chavez, Sergeant Marcario Garcia, engineer and astronaut Eleno Choa, film director Alfonso Cuaron, Supreme Court Justice Sonia Sotomayor, and Surgeon General Antonia Novello are amongst those who lobbied Latinx Heritage Month as a national celebration and
whereas Demi Lovato, Jennifer Lopez, Jorge Ramos, Eva Longoria, with their Hispanic roots have made an impact in the Latin community. And whereas Roberto Clemente was the first lady in professional baseball to reach three thousand hits, even winning MVP games in eighteen seventy one, who act as a political conscious representative of the Latin community when professional sports contain few Hispanics. And
whereas Sophie Cruz, who once said, I have the right to protection. I have the right to live with my parents. I have the right to live without fear. I have the right to be happy in front of five thousand people in twenty sixteen when she was only six years old.
Whereas a group of Spaniards, Afro Latinos, indigenous people, and mestizos traveled to California and founded the city of Los Angeles, which has the country's largest Latin population and
whereas the formation of the League of United Latin American Citizens in nineteen twenty nine, the United Farm Workers of America in nineteen sixty five, Mendes versus Westminster in nineteen forty five, the East Los Angeles Walkout in nineteen sixty eight, the Mexican-American Legal Defense and Education Fund in nineteen sixty eight, the Southwest Voter Registration Education Project in nineteen seventy four, and El Congreso del Pueblo de Espan- de Habla Española in nineteen thirty eight were all events, amongst many others in U.S. history where Hispanics played a central role. And whereas each year, Americans observe National Latinx Heritage Month from September fifteenth to October fifteenth by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. Now therefore be it resolved that the governing board of the Mopitas Unified School District join other communities and school districts in our nation in celebrating September fifteen to October fifteen as National Latinx Heritage Month.
All right, that was uh, that was the students that pieced that uh lovely resolution together and uh now it's for you, board.
Thank you, Scott.
A motion to approve the resolution.
There's a motion is a second.
I second.
All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Here pose. Seeing none, the resolution is adopted.
Do want to mention one more thing too. Uh, we do have our Robert Randall Doolin immersion program. Uh, so we should highlight that as far as us as the district celebrating uh the Spanish language as well in our education curriculum.
All right, thank you.
And President, if I may add to that, I have to say that until we started actually having these resolutions personalized and presented to us either live or through these videos during this online time, the resolutions did not carry nearly the weight or meaning that they do when they are given voice, real voice. So I appreciate Scott, the impact that your work has made in involving so many people in creating these resolutions and bringing them forward as a part of our culture of we with the board. So thank you.
My pleasure. They're great to work with. Um, and thank you so much.
All right, we're moving on to action item B. Superintendent. That's Wendy.
This is my item. So uh, this GaN limit is also a routine item. Every year after we close out the book and we will need to adopt a resolution to approve this GaN limit. And this GaN limit is uh named after the author Paul Gann back in the nineteen seventy nine. So, and the purpose of this limit is to restrain the local government spending. Basically, that's the whole purpose and the to set up a limit. And after we close out the book of each year, yeah, we will need to disclose the the limit of that current year and as well as we set up a projection for the new year. Let me go over, let me share my screen with you then so you can see the resolution. So this resolution basically just provides um quick background of the GaN limit. And then after we, uh, after we officially closed out the nineteen twenty year and um I'm here to confirm with the board that we meet our limit. So that means we do not spend over our appropriation minute for a limit for the year of nineteen twenty. And then normally there is a calculation. It's also called a GaN limit calculation. And let me open this. Let me share this GaN limit uh calculation form with you. Okay, so this is a standardized the form designed by the State Department of uh CDE Education. And then every year and with the calculation actually is automatically after we upload our data into the state uh software. And then the the information just automatically populated. And the the key thing when you look at this GaN limit is the third page here under this portion and the other just uh, other adjustment to the limit. And because we do not have any other adjustment and we are meet um with our limit and we we have a zero here. So that's basically the bottom line. That's what the board and will approve and adopt. But we all, before we adopt this calculation, we need to hold a public hearing also.
All right, um, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing.
The second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh.
Any other?
Aye.
Okay, seeing none, public hearing is open. Scott, would you set the timer for two minutes um for the public hearing?
Will do.
Thank you. With that, I don't know if uh, is it, is it okay for me to start item C? And then when the two minutes done, we go back to item B. Wendy? Item C?
Yeah, okay, sure. Yeah, item C is also my item is to approve the unaudited actual of nineteen twenty. We have attached a four document here. Let me walk you through quickly with this the four attachment. The very important, the the two important documents here are the one, the first one is this income statement. This income statement, let me hear my screen then. Oh, I can't share my screen because Hong, you're sharing, but it's okay. What I can do, I can just walk you through the attachment first and then later on we can, I can walk you through the document.
Here is.
So you can share now. I'm sorry about that.
Oh. Okay. So let me share my screen. The, okay, let me hold on. Unaudited actual. Income statement. Okay. Can everyone see the screen? This is the nineteen twenty unaudited actual for all fund?
Yes, we're able to see.
Okay, perfect. And so this is a summarize the document just for you to easily to see our financial position of each fund. For example, we listed here the general fund, O one O unrestricted. What is our total revenue is about a ninety point nine million and our total expenditures ninety two point six million. And the ending fund balance about ten million, so on and so forth. So we have each one listed here. After that is parcel tax. And then you have uh the next page is the other fund. And then we have a district total of all the fund. So this is a summarized format rather than you have to go through the two hundred pages of the state form. The state form is the one that we're asking the board to approve tonight. Let me sh- share with you what that looked like. Can you all see the screen now? It's a set unaudited actual?
No, not yet.
Okay. Okay. Here we go. Okay, can you guys all see it now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And this is the total, if you see here is the total of a hundred seventy six pages. And this is the uh standardized form that all every school district after we close out the book of each year, we will need to complete and will submit this document to our county office. And basically, the format of this form is a similar information as I shared with you in our income statement. It has um the revenue and expenditures of each fund. The nineteen twenty is the unaudited actual is the year we just closed out. And then the next to it is the twenty twenty one budget. That is the budget that we adopt in June. So basically, you you, so this is pretty much the form of the state. It's just in a different format, but the content is the same as our income statements. And I won't go over with you all the a hundred forms of a hundred seventy six pages. And but feel free if you have questions and I can help to answer some more questions here. And so this is the income statement and then the state form. And also after we close out the book, we normally update our multi-year projection. Let me share my multi-year projection with you. This multi-year projection worksheet is um a standard document that you will see every time after we have a each major budget update. I would update this spreadsheet. And so you can see our financial position after, for each major budget update. And the one thing I also like to point out to you that and in the attachment uh published in the board agenda tonight, that multi-year projection is the, it's not the current, it's from the last board meeting. It still says forty five day budget update. And we had that multi-year projection at the last board meeting. So for this board meeting and tonight, we call this is the nineteen twenty unaudited actual update. And we actually update this on the September fourth. So every time we have a date and to stamp and to sh- to show us the latest, which version is now multi-year um about. And again, the the unaudited actual, the data listed in this column is the same as we presented in the sex form, the state form, and also in our income statement. is the same as we presented in the Saks form, the state form, and also in our income statement. And we just updated that information in our format. And just an overall summary for our nineteen twenty year. Our goal is try to maximize the general fund savings from nineteen twenty. So then we can use that savings to help the twenty twenty one operation. And I'm very excited to share with the board that we were able to meet our goal for the nineteen twenty. We actually closed out our book. With here, you can see we have about two point nine million operational carryovers. Back in April and May, when we did an estimate actual for the twenty year, thinking our operational carryover will be around one point five million. So now we were able to have additional one point four million savings that can be used to help current year operation. And also, I would like to share with the board that if you recall, a couple years ago, the board had direction to the staff, if we every year if we can have some savings from general fund, we should be we should transfer at least half million to our strategic reserve fund to establish the reserves to offset the stores and the purse cost increase. And I would like to share with the board that in we were able to fulfill this goal in nineteen twenty. So you can see here, we transferred half million from general fund and to this reserve to increase the stores and the purse cost reserve from one million now a balance to one point five million. And then, as a matter of fact, because of this additional half million savings from nineteen twenty year, it will help us and to use it to offset some costs in the year of twenty one, twenty two. So you can see in our multi-year projection, we will use up the full balance in this year. And then, if you remember at the last month, when I did the forty five days budget update and we said, okay, we're going to use up our strategic reserve fund balance here to help the general fund operations in the by the end of twenty two, twenty three school year. So that's still no change, it's still the same. We're going to use up our strategic reserves. However, we do have some additional savings now show up in our building fund. Because back last month when we did our projections, we were, we have about like just barely a million and in this building fund by the end of the third year, the twenty twenty two and twenty three school year. But now because we we have additional savings from our general fund in the year of nineteen twenty, so we were able to have some additional savings in our building fund. And you can see our building fund balance go up now close to three million. So this is a better than I shared with you last month when we did our forty five day budget update. And then the last pocket here is the post retirement fund. Basically, there are no changes in here. So overall, I can say after we closed out the nineteen twenty and we meet our objectives, we were able to maximize our general fund savings by using the grant from the state and also from the federal because the federal provide us some Corona release the learning loss fund that we can actually use starting from March all the way till December. So we were able to take advantage of that funding source and to re to 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 record some transactions from the nineteen twenty year into the grant. And also, there are some other programs and also the building fund that we can move some expenditures from general fund to record in building fund. So that way can create savings in general fund. So overall, our nineteen twenty, we're doing well financially. And the ending fund balance total, the general fund is nine point eight million. And besides the three percent of the reserve, we have to set aside as a minimum reserve. And we were able to have almost a three million operational carryover that can help this year, the current year operation. And what that means, so in current year, originally, we needed to transfer maybe five million from our reserve to in order for us to balance the budget. Now, because we have additional savings carried on from nineteen twenty, we were able to lower this reserve usage. And which means then will create a little bit money and to use in the future. Basically, that's how the impact, the financial impact to us. And it's just so if we can stretch this reserve to the out years longer and less better for us. So overall, so that is a good news for us. However, I also wanted to point out, look at here, this deficit spending. This is after we close out nineteen twenty. So you can see the difference between our revenue a hundred twenty one point six million and our total expenditure a hundred twenty seven point six million. We're short by almost six million now. So that is our deficit gap. Look at the year before, in nineteen twenty, I mean eighteen nineteen, our deficit is about a million. What what that tell us? This deficit gap is still is what we needed to manage and we needed to control. We cannot allow to have this deficit gap to continue to grow. Even though, you know, we're doing well, we're doing well in nineteen twenty. That just means we're doing as what we projected or what we estimate estimate. And but we still have a deficit gap that we needed to pay attention and we need to work on. And in current year, right now, this twenty twenty one, we're projecting the over eight point five million deficit. And this is, this is something that we needed to really work on to monitor that we cannot have this deficit gap to continue to grow as what happened as we projected in the third year at fifteen million. Because if in reality, this is really happening and that means we're going to use up our reserve and then we have no money to 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 count on. Because this budget is not going to stop at the year of twenty two, twenty three. It's a it's a moving document. This year, twenty twenty one, and in around February twenty one, we will started to develop budget of twenty one, twenty two. And our third year will be shifting one year afterwards. And so if we don't have good, we don't have a discipline, I mean, plan, a plan or how, you know, if we don't discipline our spending and I don't, we don't pay attention and monitor and manage this deficit gap. And eventually, we will use up our reserves and then we'll have to do significant cut in order to reduce this gap to have a balanced budget. So that's what I can share with the board and I'm going to pause here for comments and questions.
I do have a question, Wendy. In regards to the savings to the building fund, can you clarify, is it a one-time savings or is it a short-term ongoing savings?
And the savings that listed in building fund, well, this saving, this it is not like, I mean, right now, it seems like it's a permanent savings. Because we we save this one year and then it will stay with us if we don't use it, right? And so it seems like in this is the current year. Current year, we're still going to have a healthy fund balance in building fund. And the year after, we're okay. It is the third year that we pretty much have to use our building fund based on the current projection. And then that savings won't be permanent because we're going to use it.
Gotcha, Wendy. Let me rephrase this to to help with the answer here. Are the strategies that helped us create the savings in the building fund sustainable going forward?
Yes, I think so because because building fund is is our money. And then if we have a now our goal, if you remember back then and before the pandemic, we were even talking about, we had a discussion during one of my budget report. I'm recommending the board to set aside a maybe a fifteen million as a fund balance in the building fund. And for emergency repair or emergency usage in the future. But then because we got hit by the pandemic and suddenly the state just cut our budget significantly. And then based on the kernel projection, we'll have to rely on our building fund in order to have a balanced budget. So put us with no choice. So in the long run, if there are any way we can help, we can secure our building fund balance, I think that will be a good strategy to continue with.
Thank you for clarifying that, Wendy. So that helps frame it in the sense of right now, as students are doing distance learning, we have some savings in the building fund, which is what parents have been wondering. But yet the cost has escalated, to your point, the deficit spending of educating children remotely. So as we return back to school at some point in the future, those costs as far as repairs coming from the building fund, that will come back. And so that's what I'm trying to understand going forward.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it all because our funding is heavily rely on state economy performance. I mean, if the state economy performs well and we supposed to receive more money in our general fund. Because the general fund is our to is the is the pocket that to fund our operations. And you can see based on our current projection, the current year, the current year is here, twenty twenty one. Our revenue is less than last year. That means we're under the state underfunded us. If the state at least provide us to the same level of last year or even provide a sufficient of money and then we can help, it can help us to reduce this deficit spending. So the bottom line is is really is the the revenue we received from the state, that's one way can help us to reduce the deficit gap. And the other thing is, you know, how we can manage in our spending. So and all this and I like Cheryl's idea, the third one for for us is how we can generate additional income source to help us to support the our general fund operation. So that will ultimately reduce our deficit gap. And then if we do that and we can have, we don't have to tap our strategic reserve because our strategic reserve is the first source that we can use to balance the general fund budget. And in reality, if we don't have to use the building fund, then we shouldn't. Because the building fund is supposed to be spent on buildings, on repairs, on maintenance. But now we have no choice, we have to use it to balance our budget.
Thank you, Wendy. Thank you, your team, for all that work. Because it it takes a lot of playing to be physically sound and, you know, being able to fund our school district is immense task. So thank you for giving these, you know, projections so that we can understand this better.
I'd like to add the fact that everyone should pay close attention to what is going to be on the ballot for November. Just do your review, dig deep into the understanding of what the possibilities are and how some of those things, you may view those in terms of what we're attempting to do in MLP this unified school district and where the options are.
Add to that, if you look at the weekend report, you'll see some analysis of possible legislation that I asked Scott to put in there.
Yes.
Wendy, thank you very much for your presentation and all your work in trying to keep keep our budget deficits under control. Again, I think we're we're going to be in for, you know, at least a few rough years, economically speaking. So we really got batten down the hatches and brace for the storm and, you know, thank you for doing that.
Well, you're welcome. I mean, I think this is really a team effort. And actually, you know, the 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 business services office is pretty much, we process the documentation. We process the reimbursement, the payroll. And my role is to oversee the the budget and to provide advice to the superintendent and to the board. And I think it takes everyone, all of us, to work together to make to secure our financial position and to make sure we move forward physically where sound. So so it's it's all of us working together and including our unions. I mean, especially in our MTA and CSA and MMA, it is everyone's effort and how to keep us solvent.
Well said.
All right. With that, is there a motion to accept the unaudited actuals for Assistant Superintendent Zhang?
I motioned to accept the unaudited actuals.
There's a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, congratulations, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you. Thank you, President Liang. And now
We are going back to item B. The two minutes over, we do not have any public comment. So I would like to see if there's a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing on the GAN appropriation limits.
Assistant.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, the GAN limit calculation is adopted. We are moving on to D. Approved Excel construction as prefer lease leaseback. Assistant Superintendent.
Yeah, this is my item also. And
Tonight is your night.
Yeah, I I guess so. Well, this is what I, we have a process and how we select our at least leaseback contractor. I'll have Travis to share that with the board later on. And let me just quickly walk you through our attachment here. So then you can you can understand because the document because we're asking the board to approve the construction, a lease leaseback of a pre-construction agreement with Excel tonight. And because of it's it's over forty million dollar project. And this is an important document that we're asking the board to consider tonight. So let me walk you through that document first. And then I will turn it over to Travis and to go over with you our process and so on and so forth. Let me share with you my screen here. So you can see this document. Okay. So we started with the side lease. And because this is a pre-construction agreement, pre-construction agreement is not a full set of document yet. So that's why you will see only a portion of normally that that the full document, the lease leaseback agreement is over probably a hundred pages long. And but tonight is because it's a pre-construction. The pre-construction, basically, we initiate with the contractor to start work with our architect to do some pre-planning. And then after the DSA approved our plan, we'll they will have better information and then they will provide us the, it's called a GMP, is the guaranteed maximum price for the project. And then we're going to bring the full lease leaseback contract back to board for approval. So this is just the side lease. And it is is a quickly description of the project. We have exhibit A attached here. The exhibit A is it's just a map of the the side, the description of the side, the high school. This is a high school theater and a gym. So this is the exhibit A. And then the exhibit B, basically to describe the project. And we're going to build a new performing arts center here and also a new gym. So this is the the exhibit B. And then the exhibit C is here is called a facilities lease. And you see the price here, this is the contract, this is the dollar amount for these services, three hundred twenty seven thousand. And you see the price here, this is the contract, this is the dollar amount for these services, three hundred twenty-seven thousand. So that is listed here, the, the contract for the pre-construction with Excel. And then you notice that there are a lot of blanks here that we couldn't fill because we don't know what that guaranteed the maximum price will be for the project. And so once that is determined later on, we'll bring the contract back for board approval again as a full lease leaseback contract. So that's why you will see there are a lot of blanks here. And then the Exhibit H is basically the terms and the condition for these preliminary services. This is kind of despite the scope of the work for this pre-construction contract with Excel, with their responsibility and what is their timeline, so on and forth. So, so basically, this is just a walkthrough of the agreement. And now I'm going to turn it over to Travis. So Travis, could you share with the board our process and then what is this project is about?
Sure. Thank you, Wendy. And hello, everybody. It's great to see everybody. It's been a little while since I've been on here. So it's great to participate. I'm going to share my screen real quick.
Wait, who is that? There's a tie jacket. Who is that?
Yeah, I had, I, I figured you were wearing one, so I better, I better stick with the program and be professional. So, so what I put up on the screen, can you see that all right?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the, we hired LPA some time ago. And we've been working with Francis and his amazing team over at the high school, a lot of the end users, the athletic director, band, drama, dance, everybody we can get over there that's going to have an impact on this. And so this kind of just show you real quickly what the renderings are at this point and then why we're wanting to enter into pre-construction services with Excel. This is the rendering of the gymnasium. The second gym sits where the old pool used to sit. Inside rendering looks something like this. This is not a championship gym that won't seat two thousand, anything like that. We do have some bleachers in there. This is primarily for student use, athletics and PE. Lots of badminton, volleyball, basketball, and it's a very versatile facility, about seventeen thousand square feet. And so this is a byproduct of a lot of meetings with Francis and his team and LPA. And not only that, the MOT is remarkably valuable. And as we move forward into some of these other areas, tech services gets involved as well. As far as the theater, the Performing Arts Center is amazing. It's about forty thousand square feet. This is kind of a rendering, like drone shot of what that may look like. And it will include coral and band areas as well as some black box theater and maybe even a set design area provided a budget will allow that. So you've got a lot of ancillary facilities here. You've got a black box theater here and then you have your main theater. And then I just kind of show you some renderings there. And as we move forward, now that we're done with schematic design, we get into the detail stuff. I'm certain we'll come and present in greater detail these structures. Now, the original plan called for a two-story gym. I found that to be quite expensive, building anything two stories expensive. So we came up with this great idea to put the actual fitness center, training room portion of this project down by the pool in the grassy area near the track, which, which turned into be a real exciting thing. There's a, there's a real professional training room and there where kids can actually really learn what it is to get trained. Buy those services. Then you've got a large weight room that opens up to an outdoor area so you can do indoor, outdoor weightlifting. And then you have an exercise room, be it for jet, dance or aerobic, so that's. And so that, that's what we're building and this is what we're, we're looking for with pre-construction services with Excel. And so we put out an RFP to the four pre-approved contractors and we received four responses. And then there was a committee forum that, that it goes out and determine who they felt was best fit for this project. The pre-construction services are important, important at this point in the project because it allows the contractor to kind of get knee deep in the plans we already have. Bringing them on any earlier, it doesn't really benefit it too much. But right now they can start helping with cost control, value engineering. They can look for gaps in the plans. They can look for obstacles that we may face moving forward, going into DSA and perhaps help the architect correct some of those things previous to going into DSA. So it's a worthwhile exercise, in my opinion. The three hundred twenty-seven thousand ninety-seven dollars is a not to exceed price. So essentially, they'll bill us on actual hours work. So we may not get to that. But that's a, that's a reasonable price for those services. Construction is slated, if all goes well, at DSA, fall of twenty twenty-one through fall of twenty twenty-three would be the theater, Performing Arts Center Gym and Fitness Center Timeline. And I, I do believe that the committee felt Excel was the appropriate contractor for a lot of reasons. One, they're Milpitas company and here we are, which with what I believe to be the signature project of the Measure AA bond, this, this performing art center is something else. And it's, it's something this entire community will have an opportunity to use and be inside and see and drive by because it's right by the road. And I think that everyone will be real proud of, of what the district has done with these, with these funds to help staff, students and community. So with that, I would be happy to entertain any questions you may have. And also Brian Rosenberger at Excel is on the line. If you have any questions of him, he's an executive with them.
Travis, from the gym, we checked all the boxes on the Title IX stuff?
Yes, and that's a responsibility of the architect to ensure that all those equities are there. And so this gym being a practice gym, what it does is expands on an existing program that's already in place and compliant. So if you look in this gym, you have basketball, volleyball and badminton primarily going to be in this gym. So mostly for, for PE's usage, yeah. So you had a, you had a program that was compliant. Now you've expanded on that program. I had a talk with LPA on that to make sure we were fully compliant. That was their answer.
Travis, do we have air conditioning in this gym?
No, per district staff, they said that wasn't a standard for this district. So currently is not planned. We do have some of the very large fans with the name that the website would filter out, but they're popular. Those large fans you see in that picture right there blow a lot of air. But I was, I asked that question early on and I guess I, typically the district doesn't. If that's something you want to entertain, we can certainly add that to the plans and make sure we have it.
All right. I'd like to interject on the topic of air conditioning. Before, before I ask that, can you tell, can you tell me about the fire suppression systems in the gym as well?
Fire suppression system typically depends on the type of structure. So what you would typically see is a fire suppression system. That used to be that you could do a deferred approval on that. That is to say, you could put your plans into DSA and they would approve the bulk of your plans and you hire a fire sprinkler company and put in a new fresh supplementary submitted to DSA. They don't allow that anymore. So any fire suppression that is required based on the components of the building has to be approved by DSA prior to construction, prior, prior to DSA approval of plans, actually. So LPA will ensure that whatever is required for compliance will be in the building. In case I, I am uncertain as to the whole breadth of that. That's something that we do after we get someone out for pre-construction services. That's further into the details of the design.
Okay. All right. And I'll, I'll just say, say this while we're on this topic. I think it would be a worthy idea to explore, you know, having a stronger fire suppression system as well as an air conditioning system. I mean, I, I think if you just look at what's been happening, not only this year, but last year, we're, we're seeing the effects of climate change, global warming, you know, it's getting hotter. And the fires seem to be getting more intense, more destructive gradually over time. So I, I think we should try and prepare for these trends. You look at how City of Milpitas, as well as other cities, during, during some of these unprecedented heat waves, they've taken to opening up cooling centers for some of the vulnerable members of our community who are maybe at risk of a heat stroke or heat exhaustion because they don't have a cool place to go to. So I, I think one thing that could be really worthwhile here is to talk about maybe a partnership with the city where we, we work together with the city to equip this gym as potentially a cooling center so that our community can be better prepared for possible heat waves in the future. And who knows, this, this might even save lives. And, and given how destructive the fires have been and there's a good chance that they're going to get even worse in the coming years. I did study environmental policy. I think it would behoove us to be better prepared for fires.
And I, and I agree with both of you. I think in this grand scheme of things, HVAC on this gym is not going to be our biggest element of cost. So I've made those note and I will take that back to the design team as well as the, the committee formed with Francis and his team and we will, and we'll have those conversations for sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael, for that. We will also take that into consideration with our Friday meetings or our, the meetings that we have between the school district and the city. That will be a topic that will be added as well. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right. Do we have any more questions for Travis? If not, I do need a motion.
Motion to approve the lease leaseback with Excel Construction.
There's a motion on the floor. Is a second?
A second.
Second.
I guess I'm interested, before I cast my vote, I'm also interested in learning more about what Excel Construction is doing in terms of internship and how we'll get a chance to expand those programs. In terms of their, again, I'll, I'll continue to go back to the fact that the part of the agreement that we have with our construction providers is the fact that they provide opportunities for our students. The more that we invest in them, it would be behoove us to ensure that they're willing to do, invest in our students so that when the work is all said and done, we, we have a group of students that have been educated in terms of this. I re, I recall our last board meeting, one of the students said that he was now, because he had the internship over the summer, he was now willing to consider construction as a possible career. So I know where there's smoke, I know where there's a possibility of opportunity. I want to make sure that that gets expanded accordingly. If the person from Excel Construction would like to speak to that point, that would be awesome.
Hi, my name is Brian Rosenberger, product executive at Excel Construction. Yeah, we had a Milpitas High School student helping us out in our construction technology department over the summer. And he was actually out at their Randall Elementary Project, flying drones and doing other scanning and that stuff. And of, and of course, we embrace that stuff. Almost every education project we do, we try to get students involved in it. And we are more than happy and willing to take on interns again for this project. It's, it's important and we, we want to make this a win-win for everybody.
So I look forward to, at some point, seeing something concrete. I mean, one student, two students. I would love to figure out how we can get to fifteen, twenty. You know, we have, we have quite a few students that are, that need opportunities to understand where their purpose could be. And the fact that this, these types of things are happening in their own backyard. And however, we need to go about that process to create that partnership for that to move forward, I think will be beneficial to everyone.
Yeah, I think getting some interest, more interest within the school, especially the high school, would be great. And we can have people, myself and others, go and do a career day and talk to them about, you know, internship opportunities and, and visit the school and do a little presentation and see if we can get some good interest out of the students. We'd love to have students involved.
So you know this is recorded, Brian, you know that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Just, just second on that, you know.
I don't say, I don't say things that I don't do. So we're committed to that.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Your vote?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Seeing none, the Excel Construction's lease leaseback is approved.
Thank you, everybody.
Very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item E is normal.
Again, and this item is for the board to conduct a public hearing in continuity and attendance. That, that you had a previously study session early afternoon.
Yes, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing.
Any second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
All in.
Aye.
Seeing none, public hearings open. Scott, would you please set the time to two minutes?
Okay, and we already have one public comment in from Rob Jung of Park Victoria Drive. He says, will you be tracking the number of cases requesting social emotional support from students, parents, teachers and staff? This will allow us to understand if the needs exceeds the capacity of our staff. Because of COVID, it would not be surprising that we would have a huge need as the audience is all students. Ten, ten thousand plus their parents, ten thousand plus teachers plus staff. If the needs exceed the capacity of the staff, what is the plan to provide that support? And that's the only public comment I have right now.
Okay, we have the minute and ten seconds to go. And board members, for consent items, if you can take this time, look through if there's any items you would like to pull. So when we are at that item, we won't waste any time.
All right, the two minutes is up and I have no other public comments at this time.
Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing.
Is a second?
I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, public hearings closed. We are now moving on to the consent items. Consent items are considered routine and will be acted upon by one, by the board in one motion. There is no discussion on these items prior to the motion unless members of the board, staff or public request a specific items be tabled or removed for discussion or correction. Any items to be tabled? Who? Remove? None. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consent items.
Is there a second?
I second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent items are approved. Dates for the future board meeting, September twenty-second, October thirteen, October twenty-seven, time tomorrow, five PM, closed session. October 27th, time tomorrow, 5:00 PM closed session, 6:00 PM, I'm sorry, 5:00 PM study session, 6:00 PM closed session and 7:00 PM open session for all three meetings there. Are there any announcements or reminders?
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
Superintendent Jordan.
Tomorrow night is our event from 6:30 to 8:00. It's called A Perfect Partnership: Community-Based Organizations and MUSD. We've invited community-based organizations to come and hear about how MUSD has responded to COVID as well as the needs. And then we have leaders within MUSD such as principals and also leaders of other service groups or clubs. And they will be doing about a three-minute pitch to the community-based organizations about what their needs are so that we can find alignment and commitment for partnerships.
Do we also, do we also have a new date for P2P kickoff, Norma, parent to parent?
I would, I would make that announcement on the 22nd.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
All right. Any other announcements? Reminders?
Thursday is the Milpitas Council of PTAs. And I don't recall which board member is assigned to that. Is that you, Kelly?
Sorry, for which one?
The Milpitas Council of PTAs.
Yes, I am.
So, just a reminder that the Milpitas Council of PTAs, if one of the other board members is attending as well, then if you come on and if you're a third board member, please remember that we haven't posted anything to the community. So, it's probably better if you just stay silent and not contribute to any of the discussions that have, that might have a part in something that comes to the board for a decision.
And I would potentially ask that we reserve that additional spot if Kelly is able to attend for the board president or vice president to participate. And if neither of those are available, then any other board member should be able to attend.
Yes. All right. Anything else? If not, I do need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Is a second?
Second.
Second of that.
Wow, two of you. Anybody opposed? Seeing none, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
I am 15. Wow.
Yes.